Tell us Bob.
They were part of it.
Okay.
Okay. So I'd like to welcome everyone to the January seventeenth special meeting of the Board of Selectmen. It is eight AM and if you could look at your agenda.
Nine thirty, nine thirty.
Sorry, nine thirty AM. I'm.
I know it says.
I'm reading. I should just use my head. Anyway, nine thirty AM. You have the agenda before you. Could you take a look? And if you're ready, I could get a motion to approve today's agenda. Steve, second, Amy. It's unanimous. Thank you. And then the minutes from our regular meeting held on January fourth. Could I get a motion to approve those minutes? So Steve, second, Amy, it's unanimous. Thank you. Public comments. Members of the public are welcome to provide comments to the Board of Selectmen on agenda topics scheduled for review and or vote. Comment submitted electronically should be sent to the following email address. B O S distribution at new Canon C T dot gov. Do you have anyone wishing to write comment? Okay, so seeing none, we will move on to fire department dispatch and Albie.
Good morning all.
Good morning.
Uh, the fire department would like to have payment approved for seventy eight thousand dollars for our annual dispatching services by now Fairfield County Regional Communication Center. This was, this is all part of the joiner agreement and contract in place in March of twenty three.
So have any questions? Just regular budgeted item.
Regular budget item, yeah.
Sounds good. All right. So if I could get a motion to approve a request from the fire department for payment to Fairfield County Communication Service Communication Center in the amount of seventy eight thousand dollars for twenty twenty four fire department dispatching services. So Steve, second, Amy, it's unanimous. Thank you very much, Albie. All right, moving on to police vehicle emergency equipment.
Good morning.
Nice to see you.
Better equal stuck in traffic, so I'm here to fill in for him.
Okay, thank you.
So the police department is looking for approval to enter into contract with specialty warning systems. Our normal vendor for upfitting our vehicles. We have five Tahos of different capacity and duty. So the differences in amounts are related to that.
Can you talk about why they're different? I mean, they're Tahos, right?
Sure. So for example, you'll see car three, that's our ship commander vehicle. Car four is our ship supervisor vehicle. So those have, they're a little less in amount because they don't have a cage for a prisoner. They don't need to be equipped for that. And car six is a traffic enforcement car. So that doesn't have the graphics applied to it. So it doesn't stand out for when an officer running radar or watching a stop sign for an area of concern. So that's just a little less for there. And then the other two are fully marked and outfitted patrol households.
Everything's in stock, ready to go?
Yeah, should be. Yeah, it took a long time. We've had those Tahoe sitting there.
And is this where we thought these, the fit outs would be?
Yes, yes, this is the company we've used for over a decade, if not more. We did request three, three bids. One got back to us at a higher amount. We've never worked with them before. So it went, obviously, we would go with the company that we know and approve of. And the other companies refused to bid because they weren't the ones that were putting our camera system. We have a different company that installs our cameras and our M V Ts.
So remind me, when we, and we always replace the fleet, which we need to, so in the number we put in the budget will be inclusive of the fitting out, right? When we, we budget for that.
It's in capital, that's what we do.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, yeah.
So if the car is forty thousand, we add twenty plus the camera. Okay, so when we.
Line, it's not the exact purchase line, but it's another line in the capital request.
Right, okay.
But this is already approved. This is from the last.
Sure. Yeah, and we were catching up on cars, right?
Yes, this was the big catch up. As you, if you can recall, that was the big catch up.
Yep. Cool. Okay. Okay. So if I could get a motion to approve a request from the police department to enter into a contract with Specialty Warning Systems LLC in the amount of ninety five thousand, seven hundred fifty seven dollars and forty four cents for the the project entails the installation of necessary emergency equipment for five police vehicles. Motion, Steve, Amy, sorry, Amy, Steve, I'm gonna do Amy, Steve.
No, just whatever works.
All in favor, it's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Andrew. Everything okay last night, yesterday with the roads and?
Hanging in there.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I'm excited to break out after.
Good, all right, I see Mozy over there. All right, parking department, Stacy.
Good morning. The parking department is requesting to add an additional sixteen thousand dollars to a previously approved purchase order to cover the remainder of twenty twenty fours invoices to pay by phone technologies.
Okay, so questions? Where's the sixteen thousand coming from?
Oh, there, there, and we already have the sufficient funds in my banking and transaction fee accounts. So the funds are already there. It was just an additional funds added to an existing account.
So is that because we're using it more so that, I mean, so why is expense higher? That's, I'm just. Thank you, Josh.
This was a change because the way we used to book it, the way that pay by phone kind of sends us our side is as a net. And if it wasn't separated out at first as a revenue expense. So now we're separating it out properly. So we're booking the entirety of the revenue. And we have the expense hitting the proper expense banking and transaction fees line. So that's why this thing is really to cover that differential.
But there is no real change.
There's no change.
It's kind of like what John has with his parking reference, right? You know, you, you spend money.
Okay, I don't think hey, like one has changed their fee structure.
No, they have not changed their fee structure at all. It's just where we're taking the funds out of now as opposed to where it was originally taken.
Because we're accounting for things more properly.
We are, yeah.
That's always good news.
Stacy, are residents using the payment?
Oh, yes.
Are you seeing a nice?
Yes, the trend is upward for pay by phone as opposed to using machines. Most people pop out of their cars now. They have the app downloaded and they just go right on the app.
Because there's over the years, there's been so many complaints about it. She doesn't work.
Yes, no, it is increasing over the years. So it was a great move to add them to all of our in town machines. People started using them at the train stations. That's, and that was the trend where most people use the train stations. The machines were only for occasional people who would take the train. And once we added them into our parking lots here, the trend is going up as far as.
They also had more time. They were out.
Yep, correct. So, so yeah, so people don't have to now run back to the machines and because they can only pay at certain lots for a max of three hours. So what a lot of people were doing were having to go back to the machines and pay for additional time. Now they'll just extend it to the payback market. So it's, it's working very well for the town.
Great.
Great. All right, so if I could get a motion to approve a request from the parking department to increase a previously approved purchase order in the amount of sixteen thousand dollars for pay by phone technologies, Inc. So moved.
Second.
Amy, Steve, all in favor, it's unanimous. Thank you. Okay. Drug testing service with Cheryl.
Good morning. This is a contract with drug test compliance to do drug testing on our safety sensitive positions and new hires. They share the fees went up three percent, which is the first time we've seen it increase in three years. So I put it in front of you for the public works that runs us about six thousand, but we also do new hires. Police use it. So overall, we could go about ten. So I think it's a contract that should go into the board.
Plus we wanted to know what we, what we're doing on the side as far as drug testing for, you know, for our safety sensitive individuals. So they're tested quarterly.
Quarterly, okay. Thank you.
They're in two separate pools and a DOT pool and a non DOT pool based upon their C L license. And then from there, there is a random draw.
I was gonna ask you who's random.
Yeah, right. Yeah, we don't, we don't take the draw. The company itself takes the draw. We just make sure that everyone's in the pool. They take the draw, tell us who it is. And then of the morning of the test, we contact the individual and tell them to come down for the test. Do we get tested? And then we get the results back.
Then if the test does come back positive, we are required to have them see what we call a SAP, a substance abuse professional. They will evaluate them, usually put them into some type of a treatment program, and then we have to test them. So it could get lost.
How would that affect if they were testing positive? How would that affect their actual position would they be?
So if they are a driver, they could possibly lose that status for three to six months, depending on the position of what comes up of the evaluation. And then if it happens a second time, it would be true.
They run the risk of losing their C L, which is a requirement for us as well. So it's a road towards termination.
It's very rare.
So how did, what would be the budget implications if you had a driver that was out and then you, you know, obviously, we, they're still on staff. What is the, so we continue to pay them while they're in, you know?
Yep.
And then do we have to bring someone else on staff or pay someone overtime?
Well, the good thing is we don't have a minimum or maximum staffing. So with public works, the whole group would go out in a snowstorm. Now, if we did have a snowstorm, that's where we would struggle with parks or with highway.
Right, with quite possibly having to hire an additional driver for that time.
So there could be a budget implication. Okay.
Yeah, it hasn't happened.
Okay, that's good. Okay, I like that. So will these, entering into this, it's three percent increase, not surprising, right? Does, does it have budget implications of any material in the current year? It's just like next year.
It's next year. So we've already budgeted. I think we increased it a thousand for next year.
Okay, go. All right. Thank you. So if I could get a motion to approve a request from the Human Resources Director to enter into a contract with the drug test compliance for fees related to drug, provide drug testing to pre employment candidates and to safety sensitive employees of the town of New Canaan. Have a motion.
Your turn, Steve.
Amy.
Second.
It's unanimous. Thank you. Okay, transfer station fencing, Tiger. And Nick, I'm sorry, I, I didn't look. I saw you and I didn't look. Thank you. Nice to see you.
So excuse me, um, this is a a request to enter into a contract with A and Z Services in the amount of thirty one thousand two forty two ninety five. We added a contingency of fifteen percent of four thousand six eighty six forty four for a total of thirty five thousand nine hundred twenty nine dollars and thirty nine cents. This is for installation of removal of the existing fence and installation of a replacement fence at the transfer station from the swap shop across through the new gates towards the, if you come into the transfer station and if you were to take a left hand turn, you go up to the top of the landfill, basically to that area. We had, that area fence is actually down and had a couple of trees starting to storm. So this is a replacement of that entire stretch, including the gate. And that's circa two thousand when the transfer station was open, that gate was installed. So it's actually utilized six days a week constantly. So it's, it's seen better days at that point in time. We, we went out to bid, there was nine separate bidders. A and Z came down at the lowest and they're, they've done very nice work for us in the past on a lower stretch of work for us on the, on the, on the stretch along the wastewater treatment plant site. And we'd like to enter into contract with them and the monies are available in a, in the budget.
Not to annoy you, but so you get, you like these guys, they're low bid, that's great. With something as, when it's very discreet and absolute what they have to do, why do we need a fifteen percent contingency? Like I said, I know, not to annoy you, but.
Down to an additional two feet of fence, right? Or, you know, one, one extra foot of fence, then I'm over, I'm over the unit price at that point in time. That's why. You know, I, I need, what I need to do is I've, I've done an analysis since July of twenty one, okay, of every single contract that's gone out. And every single one that's gone out with contingency and where we stand. So I need to bring that to you so you can understand exactly where we're at. We run on an average of about three percent and that's across the board, meaning every project from this level up to the multimillion dollar projects that we have for paving or what have you, you know, so overall, we're running, like I said, at about three percent. What I'd like to do is kind of update that. I updated every couple of weeks when the course of meat I put in the next lines in there and then track it through. But I'd like to bring that back to you so you can understand exactly where we're at. It's mainly for the fact that having us not, we can make a decision right.
You know, I get, I get.
Not have to come back or wait two weeks before we come back. That's the main reason, especially in a situation like this. I agree with you. We could have reduced it to ten percent, you know, but the standard at the time or the standard agreed by the town council back in twenty twelve, I believe it was, was fifteen percent. That's why, you know, we normally just stay with the fifteen percent and then maybe we bring it down lower. But that's the main, you know, what I'd like to do is bring you that spreadsheet, have you look at it, see exactly what we've done, see our success. I'll call it success because it's, you know, success. And I can go from there.
So, um, just so I understand, so you have good success with this. We build in the fifteen percent. So Josh. So, oh, here it is. In terms of our budget, so the public works budget, we have all these, you know, projects.
I don't bring it up, it'll build any contingency into our budget, no contingency whatsoever.
No, but, but, but we'll have, if, if we, if all these projects, you know, are coming in very close to budget, we have fifteen percent, but we've approved it. The stuff that's not spent per project, does that become like a general, we have these funds available and then we deploy them to other projects? You know, we clean up the capital projects.
Supported, they kind of flow back to the, the tax for capital fund balance and then like last year.
We can tap that for other stuff.
You can offset some of the next year's projects.
Yeah, I mean, we don't just, we don't just, we're not wasteful about it, but that, that's where we have some cushion to.
Small cushion. It's a little bit of cushion, right? And we're right now in the process of reexamining and closing out some of those projects for the twenty five budget. In terms of bonded money, I believe that money has to be reauthorized for bonded projects.
Yeah, so if we have excess bonding, which we're clearing up right now, that gets put against authorized with not bonded projects. So when we have savings, when we close out on reaching out to the department staff, say we're closed, the day the twenties out, about a hundred more savings we bonded for it, that goes against a project for the life of not bond yet.
So, so we, we, we use it to reduce the bonding going forward.
Right, you can't reuse it for anything else.
Yeah.
For that particular project that was originally or to on, to not all the right.
Okay, all right. And so Tiger, you said we're, we're like running around three percent? Okay, so that, that will be an interesting conversation to have, because I'm like, why can't we just lower it to ten right now? But I don't want to get.
If you want, you, you can do whatever you want. It's like, you're, you're. So if you can use it to ten percent present, you know, if you'd like to. Some of the products that we have, you know, when they get into a larger product, sometimes things occur, right? Where, you know, that's why we had originally asked for twenty, town council wanted ten and settled on the fifteenth.
Right.
That's, that was the genesis of it back in, like I said, in twenty twelve, it was probably a year long with the meetings.
Yeah. It's more that I think I kind of agree with Amy. It's more the type of project offense, like if I go out to get a fence, I get a quote, I get an estimate and they're not going above it. So, you know, like that's what I'm paying them. So I, I'm a little confused why a fence would have, need contingency. Did we give them the yard? Like in the bid, we gave them the length.
Gave them footage, right.
Gave them the footage and they might come back to you and say.
Come back as an S, some, most of our quantities are, you know, some, some, in our larger projects, there are an estimated bond, right? So like tonnage on paving. It's a hundred fifteen pounds per square yard inch. Okay, and there's an average, you know, then, then you do a yield at the end, but it's a, it's an estimated bond. If he runs a little over that, he gets that money, you know? It provided it's within the yield, okay, provided it's within specification. So in this case, the exact same thing, we estimated it at, what was it, three hundred and?
That's five hundred.
Five hundred and sixty five linear feet. Comes back and we measure it again, it's five sixty six, I gotta pay him an extra foot, you know?
Yeah.
Five sixty four, I pay him less, you know, those kind of things. And it also comes down to, you know, at that point in time, if he's there on site and we happen to notice something else that we wanted, you know, we might ask him to do something like that on a small mixture. But most of the time, that's never, we don't do might as well's, you know, you know? It's either estimated or it's not estimated. It's either the project or not in the project. We don't do might as well's and say, okay, let's load not until that as well. And this continued. In that case, we bring it back to you.
I mean, I think the issue, it's, it's great. There were three percent. The problem is it's when there are problems, like we had a big problem with one. So it's one thing, project by project, three percent. So we can, we'll look at it both ways, project by project and then cumulative.
Yeah, I mean, we asked the town council, we actually had that big conversation when the big hoops happened. Tiger prepared that spreadsheet and we actually celebrated three percent because that's pretty, it's a pretty, pretty good number.
Oh, it's great.
So.
It's great, yeah.
It's.
You said one, one that goes bad.
Right.
A big one that goes bad.
Everybody gets.
Yeah.
So, you know, we looked at the track record and the track record supported it and, you know, it's, it's nice to have the contingency, but you guys are exactly correct here. It's like you, you're, you're bidding on a specific.
Right, it's not a police station. It's not a police station. It's a, it's an individual thing that, you know, and maybe we, we evaluate, you know, sort of
Different levels.
Different levels of contingency based on the type of project, because that may be a more effective way to, to look at it. But since, since I don't really need to go into, does anybody have any other questions?
I know in the past, we, when we do a chain link fence, it's always traditional chain link. This is black vinyl. Does that last as long as?
Yeah.
I mean, it doesn't look aged after a couple of years where the vinyl starts peeling off and, you know? Because I mean, I think about the fence we took down around Waven, it was there forever. And.
Yeah, rusted and nasty, you know, the, we haven't seen longevity issues with it.
On the other side of our wastewater plant around the back, that's all the black.
I think everybody prefers black. But, you know.
We haven't, as Nick mentioned, we haven't seen it on the other, you know, behind the treatment plant or in other locations we've seen where, where there's been a problem. You know, and in this, what we're, what we're doing is we're going to be putting the black privacy slats as well. So there'll be not that they're screening between us in the cemetery, but they're screening between us in the cemetery. They don't necessarily need to see what's going on, you know? If they're there to visit a loved one, they don't need to have them look in and see someone visiting the swap shop. So we're putting a privacy fence in there as well, which I think is a nice add specifically for the, for the, for the cemetery.
How long does it last? What do you think? Twenty years? All right, thank you. All right, thanks, Tiger. And thanks, Nick. So if I could get an approval of a request from the Department of Public Works to enter into a contract with A to Z Services in the amount of thirty one thousand, two hundred forty two dollars and ninety five cents plus a contingency of fifteen percent for four thousand six hundred eighty six dollars and forty four cents for a total cost of thirty five thousand nine hundred twenty nine dollars and thirty nine cents. The project entails the removal of the existing fence and the installation of a replacement fence at the transfer station. So move.
Second.
It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tiger, materials for screener.
Right, this next is a, is a purchase order request for Chaping and Bangs for steel for material screener. This is so that we can build an additional screen for our hundred thousand dollar material screener to save something that we can do in house.
What's a screener? I'm sorry. What is it actually?
So.
Is this at the transfer station?
Dirt comes in, right? So we can separate out. Topsoil, yeah, it's a big center.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, where is it?
You said on the sandlot.
At the highway.
Yeah, we, we purchased a used one several years ago for around a hundred thousand dollars. It served us very, very well because we can make our own material.
Yeah.
Separate out stone from material from, and then, like I said, we can make our own topsoil if we need to. So we got a quote of ten thousand six sixty eight thirty. I added additional materials, Chaping and Bangs supply us with materials for other portions of steel that we use for, say, fixing us, our trucks, fixing trailers, fixing a sander. So I added an additional materials, four thousand dollars for a total of fourteen six sixty eight thirty. The reason I added the additional materials is because we're running a little low on what we have. Didn't want to come in with one P O request and then come in with a secondary P O request. So, but overall, looking at it, from what we see by building it in house, we'll save somewhere in the order of eight grand, eighty eight hundred dollars. If we, then if we shipped it out, so if we shipped it out and said, okay, we want somebody else to, to build it, it'll cost around twenty grand for us. It's going to cost ten six sixty eight. We're going to have our welder take care of it for us, which I think is a much better fit.
And then you just get raw steel, sheets of, just sheets of steel that you
pieces, yeah.
That the welder can use for other. Didn't know these things happened in the town of New Canaan. I'm learning something today.
We have to give you that better grant tour of the highway.
I, yes. I know, I got the, I got the wastewater treatment plant. I did not get the highway department.
Highway.
Yeah. Yeah, we got a few more places. Thank you.
This may be not important, but the P O request just talks about the steel for the material screener and does it make sense to say, and you know, because forty, forty percent of it is for just steel resources. I mean, does it make, does it matter if we say for the, we're here for steel screener and steel inventory or something like, I mean, stock steel. Yeah, I just think to, just to be clean.
No, that's fine. That's why, that's why I separated it out.
Which is great.
It just, you know.
Any other questions? Okay. So you can correct me if I didn't get this correct. If I could get an approval of a request from the Department of Public Works to approve the purchase of steel materials for repairs of the material screener and stock steel from Chaping and Bangs in the amount of fourteen thousand six hundred sixty eight dollars and thirty cents. Do I have a motion to approve?
So much.
Steve, second, Amy, it's unanimous. Thank you, Tiger.
Thank you.
Now we get Tiger and Mo's.
Right, so this next is a increase to a blanket purchase order. We should have, at the time, we did a prior approval of twelve thousand three thirty, three fifty five. At that time, given the, given our track record, our expenditures, I went back the past five years, the past five fiscal years, nineteen to twenty three, to show you where we had, how much money we had spent on tires in general. And our five year average is around twenty eight thousand dollars. We should have at that time just come in with that, that average or for thirty thousand dollars with a purchase order approval instead of doing it this way. That, that's, that's our mistake. We'll make sure to correct that next time. But this is for an additional amount of twenty thousand dollars for a total P O request of thirty two, three fifty five. This is with Lard and Ellie tires. Lard and Ellie tires is on a state contract and on a source well contract for Goodyear tires, meaning that if we buy Goodyear tires from Lard and Ellie or you buy Goodyear tires from someplace in Stonington, you'll get the same price. There are also on the government sales, the Goodyear government's sales account, and there's only two people in our region. One is Hank May and the other is Lard and Ellie. But Lard and Ellie is the only one that actually will satisfy all of our needs as far as size tires from trucks all the way to loaders and then be able to come and give you need service on site whereby they need to come in and take care of one of our foam filled tires for the transfer station site or other tires for the, for the highway department. They can come and do it on site. Hank May necessarily can't. So we're now wrapped into Lard and Ellie, but Lard and Ellie is also selling us tires on a source well contract and a state contract guaranteeing that we're getting the minimum price. So that's a kind of the whole thought process on why we didn't necessarily go out to bid per se. It's already on a source well contract on a state bid. And they're, they're listed as the Goodyear government sales as one or two in our area. I did go out to our listserv of all D P W directors. But I got people from West Haven. I got people from upstate and they told me I could go to a guy in East Haven. I could go to a guy in Stonington and I can't necessarily go to a guy in Stonington if I need a tire in the Canaan. Even East Haven is kind of a stretch to get down here, right? I need, I need a gentleman who's here in case I have a problem right away. I need the tire fixed and we'd have a guy come in and Lard and Ellie is local.
Any questions?
So I'm sorry, why, why did we only put twelve grand in when we've been spending thirty grand in? I mean.
I think we, you know, we, in, in the past, we was, it was in essence where we we weren't directed to go, of late we were, you know, and it's been, been great. So, but in the past, we were kind of coming in with what we needed at the time, we thought we needed. And then we would, we've continued to expand as we got, right? The, it's a different thought process now. The thought process now is to take a look at what's your overall buy, right? Our overall buy is thirty two thousand dollars. Does, what's that trip in the purchasing policy and that that trips a sealed bid, then we necessarily should go to a sealed bid. That's why I said, well, it's a source well contract, which is already a sealed bid, right? So we cover the amount, we just didn't cover the process. So next time coming forward, we'll cover the process. So in July, we'll come forward with what, either what our five year average is or what we consider to be what our purchasing would be for that year, if it should be different. And then go from there.
Just to make you feel better, I talked to Ann and to Tiger before this meeting about this specific issue and I think we have a great agreement that, you know, from now on, at the beginning of the year, the purchase order will reflect a full year of buy and that, you know, if it need, if it trips a R F P or whatever, that it will. So.
It's in essence a change in process per se, because.
Yeah, but so we had, we had that, the money.
We have.
We had the money for the entire, but we only, okay.
Have the approval to buy it because I only had the purchase order up to twelve, three fifty five.
Yeah, I think it's important. Okay.
I have money in the budget, didn't say that, apologize. I had money in the budget, just didn't have the. I have money in the budget. Didn't say that. Apologize. I had money in the budget, just didn't have the approvals.
Yeah, money and budget for this purpose and we should have just had thirty upfront. Okay.
Based upon that, it comes down to what level are we at? And then what does that trip at that point in time? And it trips a bid, but we're on source well, we're on source well contract. That satisfies that portion of it. We just need to, next time, come forward and say, we'll do the entire allotment. So next year, July one, we'll be looking at every single one of our expenditures and what they were at the end of the year. Then come forward with that or what we think it'll be. If it's, you know, if we had a off year, say, so to speak. I can't say, you know, we might not have it off here one way or another.
Yeah, you're doing all, all in upfront and that, that would, whether it has to be or not, that one, like, makes sense.
Tiger, how do you dispose and recycle those old tires? They, those are big. They go into the, does this company take them back or?
Mostly take them back.
Yes. We, we, uh, we actually save some and we kind of re, uh, recap them if we can. And then we usually tell them, yeah, no, yeah, no.
And they charge it, right? When?
Yeah, there's a fee. Yeah, that's a state mandate.
Right. We all get charged.
But that was the time where tires just sat on landfill for so long. Now they've figured out a way to try to, you know, recycle them.
Right. It's worked out a lot better than, you know.
He actually takes some of our lower towers higher. When you go to people in schools, you bring the playgrounds.
Great. Okay. Any other questions? All right. Um, so if I could get an approval of a request from the Department of Public Works to increase a previously approved purchase order for F Y twenty four with Lardinelli tires in the amount of twenty thousand dollars. Salute.
Second.
It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tiger. Um, okay. And then you should have on your tablet, say, uh, the legal fees.
It's just something you all had asked for at the last meeting, just to review.
Yeah, it's downloading slowly here.
Yes. I guess, you know, I mean, maybe it's a, a good time to announce that we are going out to bid on, um, legal services for the town. So. You know, we're hoping that Virgil Moses is also, uh, bids, but, um, we're, we're going out to bid.
And look, a lot, a lot of these costs were incurred before any of this. We're sitting here.
Yes.
Right. And they were triggered by, um, you know, actions that did not affect us. So, you know, a lot of, I think, you certainly need legal counsel, but a lot of legal fees can be avoided. Uh, if you approach things differently, which I think is the goal.
I did hear some good news, but I'm not going to, you know, that they may be significantly lower in the next month. No, my son. But well, stay tuned. Stay tuned.
I mean, you know, some of these, it's kind of frustrating. I mean, twenty thousand dollars, memorandum and understanding the library. I mean, we, we should be able to work collectively with our partners and not have to get into legal fees. You get the legal fees when you get exactly what you need. You don't have to keep going through a million iterations. Let's, and, and I, I'm sure that's the approach we're trying to do. So.
And I'm very sensitive. As our attorneys know, I don't like to call them, you know, I think there are decisions that I can make that don't need, not every decision needs a legal opinion. Um, you know, lots of decisions do, but, um, you know, if I'm signing a, a memorandum of understanding, that's just a renewal of an existing memorandum with no word changes, I don't really need to run that by legal. It is my.
Yeah, but isn't a lot of your, those conversations, don't they come under the retainer? Right?
Yes, but there's a, a limit to the retainer.
Sure. But we are now, when we ask a question like that, we are sending an email to them. Please verify that this is following up.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, uh, these expenses were triggered and, uh, you know, I think.
Yeah. It's hard to see because, you know, you see those, that amount of legal bills and then, then nothing happened. So. Right. That was, that was a little frustrating, but that's okay. So. Okay.
But, you know, to, to be fair to Virgil Moses, they've done, they've done a great job. I mean, Ira and their whole team, Nick, everybody we've worked with has been amazing. So. No, I, I'm hopeful that they're going to be competitive.
Yeah. Well, and their hourly rate is a pretty aggressive hourly rate from what legal fees. I mean, all of us in business have dealt with people with enormous hourly rates.
So, yeah, yeah. So no, I just, you know, it's more of a philosophy of, you know, we've had them for, um, two cycles of first selectmen. And it's just good practice to go out unless there's like, you know, I remember on the Board of Ed, we didn't go out for a bus contract, uh, bid because we knew if we did, it was going to raise our rates like twenty percent. But in the absence of that kind of information, you know, it's just good practice to everyone.
But, but there's also something, I, I, correct me if I'm wrong, I think Board of Ed's at the same council wherever because they trust them and they're good. So it's, it's just because you're going out to bid does not mean it's a lack of trust. I think it's just good practice.
Absolutely. Absolutely. So, and I think that's been communicated. So. Um, okay. So moving on to, uh, appointments. And before you, you have, uh, the names and I think you've all had seen the resumes of the appointments for the newly formed for tonight, today, hopefully, and once the town council approves the Affordable Housing Committee. Do I, do you have any comments or questions about the Affordable Housing Committee? I guess we'll go through each one before.
I, I, I'll just say, you know, everybody who has, um, been for, for the Affordable Housing Committee has been, um, kind enough to chat with me. I am so encouraged. And, um, A, it's a big ask. It's a big job. And I would say every single person I spoke to feels a sense of urgency on this, feels a sense that we as a town have to address this. I don't think, think there's any sense of kicking it down the road. There, and I think there's a sense of obligation for us to address this issue. And I was really, uh, very pleased and encouraged. And I think, uh, you know, people are ready to roll their sleeves up and move forward on this with a sense of urgency. So I, I really, I, I appreciate everyone. It, it's a big job, right? It's a big job. It's addressable. And I think people want to address it. They may have different views, but the views will be aired. And, uh, I don't, I, I, I am hopeful this is not something that just, a, a committee that's just meets and does nothing. I have a sense that they're really trying to get something done.
Yeah, I think so too. And, and you know, when, when the council wrote the ordinance and put this committee together, the idea was to bring into the room together for the first time, a member of each of the important boards, the town council, the board of finance, the board, the housing committee and, and your planning and zoning. And the members of those groups who are already serving the town that have already stepped up and are willing to do this additional work. It's really remarkable. So, uh, I can't thank those four members as well because they're already doing a job in town and now they're stepping up for another one. So. Um, you know, these different staggered terms, you know, I think the way we've set this up is, is nice as well because everything will stagger accordingly. Well, you know, I think we're going to try to keep a better eye on the way the, the committees work and keep them populated and keep them rolling and, and try to make sure that, uh, people are coming, you know, as they are. One of the questions, in terms of the, the elected, um, we, we covered this when we did the ordinance, but like for a town council, for instance, elected, elected member. Uh, in this case, it's Hillary Ormond, when her term is up by the council, uh, the council would then appoint a new, you know, unless she runs again and, and, um, is willing to do it again. But, um, that's really the only caveat of, of having another position of that. Planning and zoning is a, is, is not an elected position and nor is board finance. So really the only elected off the town council. So that's really the only changing of the guard that may happen down the road.
Yeah, except you, you could have people who are appointed and just for whatever roll off. And then I think it goes back to the board.
Yes. That's, I think that's the intent.
Yeah.
That is the intent. That's why we put Hillary in as a one-year term, just because she has to go, she's up for reelection next year. And so, um, you know, she may stay on, um, if she chooses to stay on the town council, but if she chooses not to, then the town council has a new, a new person that they can appoint that we would approve.
Yeah. So, uh, and I, I may have missed it. So, uh, have we assigned, who's going to have what terms of these five?
It's in the, it's in the list. If you look at the agenda.
Okay. So, yeah, let me just, it's really quick.
And we made sure it was, uh, balanced by party too. So there's, you know, so everybody, we don't have all, one year, all Republicans or Democrats rolling off.
And I mean, that's, you know, you, you use a certain Republican Democrat and this, this is.
Oh, we have an unaffiliated person.
This is, I, I've always looked at this as we talked, we're putting this committee together as the absolute bipartisan problem of McCannan. I mean, if every single person in town and on this committee knows that this is, this is an issue that we're facing as a community and then we have to address it head on. And, and as Amy said, I think everybody's ready to do that and very anxious to get underway. So.
Yeah. So why, why do we put John for the one-year term? John Goodwin, he has such a depth of knowledge.
Well, he can be reappointed in a year.
Okay.
I mean, that's any, every person that is a town council is a.
Yep.
Is a.
That's right.
Everyone can be reappointed. So it's, it's.
Every one of these.
Yeah.
You know, and John in particular has such a great knowledge to plan its own and all that he's been through. Uh, you know, the, all these folks that have stepped up are incredibly, uh, willing to do the work and we love to keep them as long as they'll serve.
Right.
Until there, there's never, as we've discussed, the end of this issue. We don't, you know, it's just an ongoing.
Right. Yeah. Yeah. This is, you know, it's, it's the, the current year, the five year, the ten year, the fifteen. It continues, it continues on. So, and if we approach it like that, then, uh, and, and what I was so encouraged by everybody is that we're going to address this issue. We're not going to kick it down the road. It's important to the town and the commitment right across the board was very impressive. Yeah.
And I, I think we should talk about, uh, just mention the fact that, I, I know the three of us have talked about it a little bit, but we are, I think we're all on the same page in terms of funding this group to the, to the point where, you know, if, if they need consultants and whatever they need, we've been, we need to get them funded and get them going as soon as possible. So I'm sure they'll meet and figure out where they want to go.
Right. And they may have to, you know, that'll be an interesting, because it's not in the current budget. We may need to, you know, sort of, one, once it gets, because they haven't met yet and we'll probably, they probably won't meet until after it's beyond the Board of Selectmen. We probably should.
We can put a placeholder in.
Okay.
We can put a placeholder in for maybe a half person, you know.
We have, the thing is, um, let's be careful with that and, um, because we have staff in town currently that, um, we can utilize that are part timers that can assist that committee if necessary. So I don't want to be, I mean, we could.
We can talk about this during a bunch of times. We, we should tie this into a bunch of discussion.
So anyway, okay. So, um, but I do, you know, to, to kind of wrap it all up in, in my conversations with every person that we are nominating right now. Um, I did emphasize that this is the most important effort of the community right now. And we understand, um, the importance of their role and they're all very committed. So. And all of them are, um, really bright people. So.
I would suggest that you vote on the three separate terms.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay. So if there's no more questions, I would like to get a motion to the approve, to approve the appointment of Hillary Ormond, John Goodwin and Michael Sweeney for four-year terms ending July first, twenty twenty five to the Affordable Housing Committee. Do I have a motion? Steve, second. Amy, it's unanimous. Then can I get a motion to approve the appointment of Bill Perret, Jeff Williams and Krista Nielsen for four-year terms ending July first, twenty twenty six to the Affordable Housing Committee? Amy, Steve, it's unanimous. And then can I get a motion to approve the appointment of Chris Williams, Jane Williams, Chris Wilson, Jane Williams and Maria Weingarten for four, for a four-year term ending July first, twenty twenty seven? Steve, Amy, it's unanimous. Okay. Thank you. Wow. Guys, this is momentous day. We have the affordable.
Now it just has to go to town council, but.
Monday.
Yeah.
No, tonight.
Tonight. Oh, my goodness. Okay. And then we have another, and it's too bad we missed this one last night. Unfortunately, with the weather, it would have been nice to have this done yesterday, but unfortunately, mother nature.
Jan is on with us.
Oh, great. Okay. Um, so the next board that we needed to fill open positions were, was for the Board of Finance. They have uh, open positions for their alternate members. They have a fully seated full-time member, but, uh, we needed to, um, put in an alternate, two alternate members. Uh, we are putting forward Jan Schaefer and Nicholas Matraksas, Matraksas as the alternate members for two-year terms ending December first, twenty twenty five. Um, any comments or questions? Jan's on the line, it sounds like.
Another two strong candidates.
Yeah. I mean, we're so lucky that, uh, we have such strong candidates in the Canaan. I mean, Janet, you're on now. You know, we were looking at your resume earlier and your, your wealth advisor roles and everything you've done in your career. It's really amazing that we have so many great people working and living in McCannan. Uh, you know, you're a member of J P Morgan Bank back in the day and, uh, Bank of Melon. I mean, it's the resumes that we see from folks, it just makes me. I, I just, I, I read these resumes and I'm in awe every time. It's, it's amazing, uh, the, the talent we have in this town. So. And Jen, I know working with you, um, through the R T C and all the hard work you do behind the scenes there, you are a working, working person. You're a worker. So, um, I think you'd be a great addition to, uh, the, the Board of Finance. And, and I know Tyler Vieri is very excited about, about having you on.
Thank you so much, Steve. Thank you. I look forward to, uh, serving.
Thank you for offering your service. Yep. And I think we have the same, the same high quality.
Yep.
Worker version in, uh, Nick. So it's great. It's great.
Just talked to Nick too. And Nick is amazing. He's a huge addition. And, uh, his, his resume is, you know, I, I was looking before, it's, I think it's like six pages.
Yeah.
Unbelievable.
Yeah.
We are so lucky.
Yeah, I was fortunate. I, I did have Nick come in, uh, to interview and he was, he was great. And, and I, I've known Jan for a year. So that was not a necessary interview. Um, but.
And you know, the alternate row, you are alternate, but you'll step up if someone's not there. But it's actually a great place to be because you get through, you get to absorb it all. You know, there's, the, the budget cycle is a little bit complicated if you haven't done it. And so it's, it's a really nice place to be, which is why we generally have people move up from alternates. So.
Well, thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jan. Okay. So if I could get a motion to approve the appointment of Jan Schaefer and Nicholas Matraksas as alternate members for two, two, for two-year terms ending December first, twenty twenty five, subject to the confirmation by the town council. Salute. I think it's unanimous. Thank you very much. And then we have, um, a nomination for, um, the appointment of Robin Bates Mason for a two-year term ending December first, twenty twenty five. Uh, Chris Shipper is rolling off as he's taking on the, uh, lead role at the community foundation. So, um, and Robyn's, obviously we've all seen, seen all the amazing work Robyn's done in town related to conservation and, and so does anybody have any questions or?
No, I mean, this is a perfect point. I mean, I, I don't think there's anybody in town who has done more to privately get people to change their behavior. And to the benefit of everybody from just being more aware of your landscaping, you know, reducing if you can your lawn, whether you have to put stuff on, you know, do you really have to leaf blow and all of this stuff, which benefits everybody. Every, not to mention the swap shop, which beyond the fact that it keeps stuff out of the landfill, really is a community for a lot of people. It's like, it's like a great, people really enjoy being involved in the swap shop. And they still, there, it was one kid, she overheard, who said, it's a little like a, uh, like a ten-year boy goes, my mom's taking me to the swap shop. It's awesome.
Yeah. I mean, I had the pleasure of working with Robin for four years on town council. There is no one that is easier to work with than Robin Bates Mason. She is just an amazing person and, and what she's done for this town in the short, her short career, it's, it's amazing. And, uh, this conservation commissioner, as Amy said, it is literally the perfect position. So.
Yep.
Thank you, Robin, for stepping up.
So I echo everyone's comments and, um, I would love to get a motion to approve the appointment of Robin Mason for a two-year term ending December, December first, twenty twenty five. Amy.
Salute.
Second.
Steve, it's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And then we have one, one member to seat for the audit committee. We have a few more coming forward, hopefully soon. We have, uh, Mary Cody, Cody, who is a former member of the Board of Finance in town. She is a tax accountant. Um, very busy lady and always giving to this community. Um, she was also the Board of Finance's rep to the, um, before you, Amy.
Yep.
The Board of Finance rep to the Board of Ed, uh, contract negotiations team. So I worked with her then. So it was great.
Yeah. And she, and correct me if I'm wrong, she was very, uh, influential when we, uh, moved to self-insure.
Yes.
Mary, Mary is terrific.
I sat down with Mary for hours when I first joined the Board of Ed because the insurance was a, a big area for us. And we just sat down and went through all the accounting and all the, I mean, she was amazing. So.
Yeah, be perfect, perfect. She's great.
And I've known Mary a, a long, long time. Uh, and she, her heart is, is so focused on the Canaan and, and the work she did in the Board of Finance was really amazing. And, you know, one thing though, I, I do need to mention that my wife, Tracy, gets called by Mary once in a while. Tracy's a bookkeeper and she does work for Mary once in a while. So I don't want any confessions. Figure I mentioned that, but I've known Mary for a long, long time. Uh, she is a great, the fact that she's willing to do this and come back to service again is, is incredible. So thank you, Mary.
Okay. So there's no further comments? Okay. So there's no further comments. I would like to um, seek a motion to approve Mary Cody to the Audit Committee for a three-year term ending December first, twenty twenty-six, subject to confirmation by the Town Council.
Certainly.
Steve, second, Amy, it's unanimous. Thank you very much. Okay. Uh, moving on to the optional standard mileage rate.
This is just something we have to do annually. Uh, the IRS sets the rate. We just have to approve it at the Board of Selectment level. Um, and then we send it up to finance so they can reimburse anybody who needs to get reimbursed.
Okay. Any questions, comments? All right. So if I could get a motion to approve a request to adjust the mileage reimbursement rate for town business effective January first, twenty twenty-four, from sixty-five and a half cents per mile to sixty-seven cents per mile in line with the recent change announced by the Internal Revenue Service.
Salute.
Amy, Steve, it's unanimous. Thank you very much. Um, okay. I think they already did the legal.
Was there any questions on the legal bills?
Yeah. Any questions? I had it in there twice.
Well, no, the, the first was the legal.
Yes.
Yeah. The actual legal bills.
Okay. So any questions on the legal bills? We kinda had a chat conversation already, but okay. So could I get a motion to approve legal fees? Steve, second, Amy, it's unanimous. Thank you very much. Um, contracts, review of contracts, twelve, uh, ten thousand dollars and under. Any questions?
You gotta love the one for the Waviney House murder mystery performance.
And that's a, and that's a, in, again, that's on the self-sustaining fund if I'm not correct, you know, mistaken. So that'll be in, in it. Yes. And it's oversold. It sold out accord, it sold out.
Yeah, revenue offset.
Yep. Okay. All right. Any other questions? All right. So if I, uh, that's just the review. Um, and then the tax overpayments. Are there any questions about tax overpayments? Before we return them to their.
Nope.
Okay. So if I could get an, a motion to approve refunds or tax overpayments. So let's see, second, Amy, it's unanimous. Thank you very much. Um, the only Selectmen comment I have is um on uh, January twenty-fourth at seven PM, there will be a public hearing here um related to the application by, by the town for a moratorium related to units at both uh, Milcourt and um, Can Parish. Um, I, you know, it starts at seven. Uh, it will have, it'll be before Planning and Zoning Meeting, Sarah Carey and our attorneys, um, Nick Bemonte and our Bloom will be there as well as myself. I just would like the public to be aware that it will be only a discussion or really just comments from the public and questions if, if we can answer them. Um, related to the moratorium application, there will be no discussion of any of the current um, affordable housing, uh, you, you know, applications, um, you know, the eight thirty G applications that have been uh, submitted. We can't discuss anything in litigation and all three of those projects are under litigation. So um, but other than that, if, I don't really have, trying to think, I don't think I have anything else to mention. Any, any questions or comments? Okay. So now we get to move into the budget review. So. Um, so we're gonna start with general government. Um, how, where do you want to start?
No, it's start general.
Oh, sorry. General overview.
Yes.
So I won't take up too much of your time with any thing I might eat into the recreation. This is just a copy of the Parks and Rec email. Just so you have in mind while they're going through it. Um, so we'll keep it very, very brief till we can get into it. Um, you should, in front of you, have a copy of the budget book, which has the operating capital and narratives from each department. Um, before this, we went through a pretty uh, rigorous process in terms of uh, reviewing with each department, their operating and really basing what their twenty-five budget numbers are off of ten-year averages of their actuals. That's what they plan on doing for the next year and.
So then again, so when you met with them, it's basically looking back ten years and then what they think next year is gonna be.
Yeah, what their goal, what their, their plans in terms of development. And yeah, I think we, we, we spent more time probably than, than ever going line by line, which is great.
Yeah.
Just gaining really good insight into what goes into each of these departments' budgets, uh, trimming where we could and keeping it really tight. And uh, yeah, I won't take up too much of your time. More of a process. You should have a updated summary sheet that includes um, the Board of Education's recently closed budgets. Also, that'll slightly differ from what's in the packet right now. Uh, you should also have a legend for where, what we're reviewing.
Great.
Within. I'll turn it over to Josh.
And, and Josh, just in terms of the summary on revenues, just, you know, what will we have now is we'll be going through every department and, you know, with, talking about operating and budget and uh, this would be, you know, the revenue collections and everything. That would be if everything was proved as is with the transfer from the general, right? So this is just.
With the five billion dollar drawdown.
Right.
Correct. Yeah.
Okay. So it's just a plug, a plug at this point as we did.
It is correct.
Okay.
All right. Yeah, can I have questions on the fee sheet already?
Morning.
Morning.
Yeah.
Do we have the slideshow on our tablet?
Yeah.
Oh, this one.
Yeah.
No, you don't.
Okay. But we will.
You'll, you'll have it, presumably another on that screen in a second. And we can get it for you. We're making some last minute changes with.
That's fine.
Everything. So.
That's fine.
Yes.
But Tucker, in general, the, the, the presentation by departments, they'll be available if anybody wants to be able to see them.
We would like that. Yes.
Yeah, but because I, because someone asked me, I was telling them how thorough the budget processes and what great presentations. And they said, well, where can I see?
There's a budget folder, Josh, on the uh, on the website and all budget documents are in that uh, in that folder for anybody, for anybody.
What, and just, just because, so wait, where do you drill in? So it's, it's the newcanon.info and then the next drill down is?
Endos, documents, minutes, that kind of.
So we have to get, they need to go into um, for the finance or into Selectmen? So when you go onto the website, it doesn't, you have to, I just want to be very clear about how you.
Yes, exactly.
It's for us, we know how to navigate, but um, so if you go in, Josh is doing it right now. I can see.
So I post the current budget document. If you go into Department's Finance Budget Documents FY twenty-five, there'll be the most up-to-date version of the Board of Selectmen proposed budget draft or whenever they approve it, that'll get updated. That gets updated throughout the process until it's approved. And then the final budget book gets attached into that folder.
Yeah.
In terms of recent decisions, that's somewhere separate.
Yeah, that's true. Because that really gives people the flavor.
For, for each meeting. That would be in, like, if it's in your folder, we do a public packet. So everything that's in your tablets is on the public packet for this meeting, Board of Selectmen, one seventeen twenty-four.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, what you're saying, Amy, is that you would, if you're John Q Public and you go, you log onto the town's website splash page, what if there were up top where we've had those hot links about what's going on? The next few months, you could click on one button.
Yeah.
And get taken through that.
Yeah. Let's talk about this at Communications next week. We could make one of our icons.
Because people would love it. Because I, I think it, it gives people a greater understanding what everybody does. You know, and it's like, oh, wow, we do all this stuff and Park and Racks are, oh, my God, you know. You know, I remember before I was in, in the Board, Javon would go, why do we have so many vehicles? You know, like New Canon, whatever. And then you sit through Tigers and you go, oh, okay, this one's been around for ten years. It's got this many miles. So I think it, it uh, is uh, gives people a view about how well things are run and where the money goes. So if we can, if we can somehow do that, because someone said to me, well, where do I find that stuff? And well, I can get it on my tab, but I didn't know if they could get it. So. So good. How great our rec is.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for giving us time to describe our request for budget. So here, sitting with Zach on describing the park and then budgets. So part of our mission, you know, to improve the well-being of New Canon residents. That pretty much says it all right there. But with that, we're utilizing the resources available to us and when we have, we have great facilities, uh, we have great people working and everything else. So it's, we, we encourage promote utilization of personal and family time for recreation and leisure activities. We offer and endorse a diverse range of high-quality recreation services. We're citizen-centric, cater to the needs and interests of residents of New Canon. And we try to make everything affordable, maintain affordable cost for recreation services. Okay. So our team, you know, you know me, John Howe, next to me is Zach. We have um, under Zach, we have Steve Dayton, Dee Watkins, and Deb DiMuzio over at Lapham. We have Aggie Aspenwald, Kathy Collins, Assistant Director um, for our weddings. Right now, we don't have a wedding coordinator, but we have um, as everybody knows him, Butch Landon, who's our house manager. And then we've had the addition of Rich Castalucci from Building Department. And of course, the Parks Department. We have Todd and Ryan that are here today. Um, with them, we also have Frank Colandro, um, Joe Olson, and ten other guys in the Parks Department, full-time maintaining parks, paint like snow. Um, recreation programs. Oh, part main. That's better. Sorry. Yeah. So part main, it's anything from mow and trim and landscape. And most of you guys see the, the orange trucks and now some white trucks around. So anything from athletic fields in the summer to snow removal like yesterday. You guys do a great job with that. Now we'll go to recreation program. So many programs. Since Deb and Zach's been on board, we've revitalized a lot of them. One of the notable ones is our camp. Our camp's spent at sixty um, campers at a time. Last year, we went up to a hundred and this year, we're going to a hundred and twenty. Um, and we think we won't have any problems selling, selling out that way. Uh, one of the reasons is our camp's very affordable. And with it revitalized, people want to come. We've been able to start using the Steve Banko pool so that, you know, camp's at Waviney and pool's right there. So we're doing that. Um, field trips and everything else. Zach's also re, revitalized our exercise classes. Our swim team has taken off at the pool lately. Um, we changed the format of paying, which I think helped a lot, but all of a sudden, we have a lot of people that are interested from anything from swimming and diving to staples to water polo. There's some of that. So we started last year partnering with the YMCA for swim lessons at the pool. They're in the business of teaching swimming all over the place and they, the gentleman we had who had done a lot for years for the pool retired. And he didn't have, he didn't have anybody to replace him or anything else. So we made the partnership with the Y. And then, of course.
So I'm sorry, just the, the Y runs the swim team?
No. The Y, the Y runs the swim lessons. The swim team is done through the Rec Department.
Okay.
We have our own coaches and, and, and assisting coaches and everything.
And it, and when does it run from? Does it run from Memorial Day or mid-June or till when? Is it two months or?
It, it's basically a month and a half.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. It's after school gets out.
Right.
And mainly because our, our coaches are teachers.
Yeah. And so this, so the swim teams, um, uh, like at nine, when, when, in terms of when did it, when is the swim team use pool?
Swim, swim team uses the pool in the morning. Sometimes we have some uh, matches in, in uh, in the afternoon, but mainly it's the morning.
Okay.
Special events. You mentioned the um, Murdy Murder Mystery Night that did, sold out very quickly, but we also had a very successful fall festival this year. Father-daughter dance. Those are both new ones. So all three of those are brand new. And then, you know, some of our other special events, the Waviney Concert Series still is very successful as long as the weather holds. And of course, we partnership, you know, with the to um, the fire, the family fireworks. And then breakfast with Santa. We sell that out in no time. So. Now, you don't need to hear the music, but.
This is our update from our fall festival this year. So the video that we made, our promotion for next year, um, kind of what we used for this year as well, which is great. So kind of highlights it. We'll do the promotional piece for next year.
Will it be on your, in your Rec tab on the town website?
So we have our own recreation website. So yeah, it will be on ours. So yes, what we'll do is when we send out like our promotional emails, we'll say, here's the video. You missed out last year. Come back this year. So we use it as that as well.
Tucker, is it linked though? If, if would our, if we go in the main, it's, it should be linked to your rate. Okay.
You, you won't notice the difference.
Okay, perfect. I'm trying to drive people to the town website. So I want, I want people to like, be able to find everything they need in one place.
It's a lot easier to drive them to the town website and go to recreation than to try to go to the direct address.
Right.
And this was a brand new event for us to share, which we were, I mean, we put it out there. We know we're gonna get two hundred people, three hundred. We got over a thousand, which is great. So it was a, it was a great event. Um, people were involved. It out there movie forum. We had some of our trackers as well. I did their whole little tractor hayride. Kids loved it. It was, it was very, it was a more of a success than we even expected it to be. So it was very successful.
And you're coordinating, so it's not the same time the Nature Center fall there would be, right?
It, it. We gave them a call, yes.
Yes, we, we found out what it was.
And, and going to the shore.
Yeah. And ours was just one night, one afternoon, evening. So it helped that the weather was absolutely perfect. You couldn't have had a better fall.
Yours was on a Saturday, though. Wasn't it? Was it a Saturday or Friday?
Um, I think it was a Friday.
Was it a Friday? Okay. And then, and then Nature Centers is Saturday.
And we kind of, we stay away from, we don't do similar events that they do.
Yeah, right. That makes sense.
A little different. Yeah, for sure.
We're not trying to compete.
There's surely demand for all. So.
Correct.
Yeah. Well, and their evening event is a very adult-driven event. Yours is a very children-driven event.
Family. Yep.
We want to keep it though.
Yeah.
So we have many memberships from the Steve Banko Pool, you know, Meat Park Pickleball, Tennis, Paddle Tennis, Juana's Beach Passes, and you know, Spencer's Run Dog Parks, Dog Park. So many great town parks and that's what helps us with our programs. So you know, most every, every step of the way, it gives us a great place to run a lot of our outdoor programs.
Do you remember offhand the acreage for our parks? I think we're like double the park space that Darian has. We have a lot of park space.
A lot more space.
I mean, I think it's important.
Athletic field space and a lot more, but in my, my open space. Offhand, I don't want any more.
Is that post, is that pre or post the um, Great Island purchase?
Oh, that's true.
Good point. Um, pre, pre.
It's been high tide, so maybe. So yeah, offhand, I don't, I think, yes.
No, I, I have the number somewhere up on, okay.
And our, our athletic fields, the park guys are doing a great job.
Look at those lines.
We're routinely talked about we're having the best athletic facilities in the States from our artificial fields to our natural grass fields. That top left is, that's Connor Beal.
Are you kidding me? Wow.
That's beautiful.
Yeah. Lapham Community Center. You know, this year, a million dollars was saved with Medicare party. We did a great job. That's, that's directly saving the residents money. So.
I know someone involved in that one.
Yeah. Act like so. Uh, there is a new grant that we've received for um, Lapham that um, will hopefully extend some hours and some programs to, to later on in the evening. With that, just so you know, that will not affect our budget process. If, if this is successful, we'll be coming back looking for money. We're not hiring any per, per, permanent employees or anything like that. So whether we decide this is very successful or not, we'd be coming back for approval. So it's not like if we're taking this grant, we're starting to do an extra hours and we're just planning on keeping.
So have you received a grant approval?
We received a grant approval.
For how much?
Trying to say thirty-six thousand dollars.
Love it.
And of course, we do many different programs at Lapham. Anything from cooking to movies to blood sugar screening and I could keep going on and on.
I mean, Aggie and the staff over there. Only your good things come out.
Yep. Waviney House Weddings. With our new branding and our new logo there, we seem to think that we're having um, a lot more interest in having weddings. Uh, our limiting factors are still that we don't have one big room. We can't handle more than a hundred and sixty people. There's no air conditioning. You know, if you went over there today, it'd be hot in one corner and cold in another, but it's still a Waviney House and it's gorgeous. And people that want to have that type of venue think that. It's still a wavey house and it's gorgeous and people that want to have that type of venue think that.
I'd like a little more info on that, I mean, to just say what we do, so we don't have a coordinator, that was the whole thing by coordinator. I I would like to know, what do we have, what what's what's the bigger picture, like we want to. You know, I I I'm kind of curious in terms of cost benefit on it, because it does, if you're doing weddings for people, it's not available for community, even though I know community stuffs take presents. I would like to know what the schedule is. Are we going to hire somebody, how much do we bring in, you know, what's the net on it? I also think it's interesting what percent of folks who choose to have a wedding at Wavine. Might be New Canaan residents or someone without, okay, because. It's in, you know, it's it's a cheap rental, you have to bring a lot of stuff in, it is complicated, I know in the past they talked about maybe doing something broader with a. I I just wonder where we are in that, because I believe me, I think that add, we added a staff person for that and then the person went away, right? We don't have them anymore.
We don't have anybody right now, he is he is stepping up and and taking care of it and working the extra.
But but having. I got no details, but I will tell you as as someone who is in the wedding market right now, not for myself, well, for myself, my daughter, um, you know. She reached out to Wavine to find out some stuff and because we don't have someone there that's really fully dedicated to it. It was a little frustrating on her end to deal with it.
We're looking into all of that, Amy, and I think you'll remember we did as part of the the rebranding and the website and all of that. We we did hire a consultant to help us gather at least all of the competitive information of everybody around us, what everyone else was was charging. We were definitely under.
Oh, we're we're way under, because.
But we have the limitations that a lot of them have, right?
In the summer.
Yeah, all of that, so, uh, but I would like to point out that that logo that you're seeing, the waving house logo. That came to be because if you look at those windows, that is that quadrupole is in the windows, if you go around Wavine, you will see that everywhere. Inside and out of the building, you'll see it in the masonry, you'll see it above the fireplace, you'll see it on the doors, on the windows. Um, that was something obviously way back when that their designer worked with that, but so that's why we chose that as the logo, but. The the to your point, the it's endless, I mean, we could go, we could make it the most premier wedding destination ever with with, but we don't necessarily want it to go there. My point is that the community always, you know, Monday to Friday and then on, you know, some occasional weekends, it's always community events.
It's just that we chat about a lot, but in terms of like looking at it strategically, you know, okay, to do it. I mean, there was that whole rebranding and, you know, and and people have different views of whether you want to monetize your buildings or not, is it a community ask? But if you are choosing to monetize it, are you doing it just because it's nice to have a wedding venue? Or it makes sense for the town that there's some money coming, I got no information on that, zero, so I I don't have any information, like if you said I wanted to. Put somebody in the wedding planning space, why? What is to do first, I I other people might, I don't have anything excepting it's a pretty place for a wedding, it's a beautiful place for pictures, right? So I just think as we're looking at these type of initiatives, we we should know. We could put together, but I think it's it's fair to ask for a proposed budget for, you know.
You you will see that when we get into into our self sustaining fund.
All right.
Weddings in there, it is, it's a very quick overview, but we can get you, we can provide you with a lot more information.
And some smaller challenges as well that we're facing, like for instance, that B picked up some of the slack, but these people want to come in on Saturday mornings for for Sunday, they want to use the weekends and B isn't available. So I saw them like a wedding coordinator, so like we build on the weekends, even before the house and so forth.
And of course, everything else in between, from the sports groups, playgrounds to. Snow, since it was yesterday to, you know, the. Grooming of the artificial field, say nothing about the seeding and maintaining and everything else of the regular field, so we'll take care of all of it.
How often do you have to groom fields?
A lot depends on play, weather and everything else, but we we have a few different pieces of equipment to to groom, um, just a regular.
I didn't know they got groomed, so.
Yeah, I I believe that.
I saw a little picture.
Yeah, that picture was taken just before Thanksgiving. So, yeah, we 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 have, we have a groomer school program that actually will pick up debris. And some of the rubber, chrome rubber and then. Screen it and.
Reapply it.
We reapply the rubber that's good, the chrome rubber, but then take away all the. All the impurities, anything from tape to, you know, paper clips.
Oh, yeah, you don't want to, we don't want to.
Anything and everything, so. Yeah. So, but and then just brushing it to stand up, it it's similar to vacuuming your carpet. If you never vacuum your carpet, it wears out very quickly because it's down there by grooming it and standing it up, it lasts a lot longer. We have many partners, you know, in in parks and rep from the Athletic Foundation to all the sports groups. Beautification lead, the elementary and middle schools with our before and after school programs, the exchange club, the garden club. You know, high school athletics, waving park conservancy and even the New Canaan Scholarship Foundation. I get to go up in the helicopter and drop golf balls in March. We actually have ten divisions, uh, you know, from park maintenance, we're going to go through them all, so I'm not going to bother reading them off to you, but, um. You know, we take care of a lot of different things. So now we come into the fun stuff. Overall, the Parks and Rec Department budget request, it stands at five point one six percent. Out of our budget of a hundred eighty nine thousand eight hundred twenty six right now. Alright, total budget, uh, total operating budget at three million eight hundred sixty six thousand eight hundred forty dollars. Yeah, because they're all separate divisions.
Could we, yeah, no, I know, you have to have, do you have a, do you have a compilation of everything together?
Yes, that's what, that's what I'm saying.
For us to see.
Yep.
You said that, you said the total and this is parks, Laphams, waving everything, but how much the total?
So three million eight hundred sixty six thousand eight hundred forty dollars.
That's expenditures, yeah.
Expenditures, that's our request.
Yep.
Um, if we, if we remove the utilities, it helps a little bit, um, we don't feel we have control through it with it, that's, we'd be down to four point five.
That's just, but but what's your, what's your revenue side, because I, we treat it differently, right, uh, and Josh, like revenues come in, right? Okay, sorry.
Yeah, that's alright, no problem at all, right.
So we're going to first start with the expenditures, so with park park maintenance. I'd be glad to go through as much as you want, but I was going to hit the high points more than anything, so whatever, you know, in our salaries overtime. It it shows that we're up, we're asking for twenty five thousand more dollars. That's that's used for two separate things. Twenty three thousand of that would be to have somebody come in every morning on overtime. So being the turf fields, sunning field. And meat park area picking litter, emptying the trash cans at Duning. During the main season, this is the spring and the fall. It it's, if we do the numbers, it comes out to about twenty eight thousand dollars, but we don't think we need to have. It overtime all the time, like on a rainy day, we can fit it into our regular operations and everything else like that. It's strictly something we feel we need to do because of the amount of use we have on the fields. You know, it's it, there's a lot out there, so.
And that'd be a current employee doing overtime, right?
There'd be a current employee doing overtime, yes. Yep, the parks guys.
What did we end up doing with like trash cans, I knew that was an issue, like we had trash cans and then people cleaned out the cars and filled them up, so sometimes we took them away.
We, back in two thousand and eight, there was a way to save money and actually we feel that the fields are cleaner.
Right, because people don't.
Carry in, carry out, we still do have dumpsters and people still clean out their cars, some people actually clean out their homes and put them in the dumpsters. But, uh, it it's a workable solution. Yeah.
We saved a lot of injury too, there's a lot of the guys lifting those heavy, those, so heavy with all the sports joints and everything, imagine picking up a garbage can, it was like full.
We we still feel we need garbage cans in Duning Stadium, you know, it's. You don't want a big dumpster right where everybody's walking in and out, you know, so that's why there's still garbage bins.
And we, I think we're working with all the sports teams, I know they've tried to get rid of people who use disposable bottles, but I'm I'm assuming with the schools, there's this. You use, you use the field, you clean it up type of thing, right?
You know, unfortunately, there's so much use, some of the stuff that happens is you go. Disposable water bottles are probably the biggest curse because it's no big deal if you leave it half full. You know, but but even anything from the clothing that's left behind to athletic equipment, etc. It's a lot of use, so that's why. The other, the other part of that twenty five thousand is just because due to contract changes over the years. The the guys get more money, we have about the same labor, same overtime hours, but it's processed a little bit more, so. Um, under outside contractors, we're looking for ten thousand more. We're looking to do limited beast control, different than the beast control that we do at Meat Park where they go in twice a day. That's because the the geese live there. But on Saks in the high school, there's times of the year where we'd like to be able to move them along, let them go find a better place to. Eat than our fields, so.
How do you do that?
We we would have, we would hire the company to come in with the dogs, presently, we've been using a contractor that.
Bring some terriers in and they run them.
Yes, and.
That's awesome.
And what they do at Meat Park for us, since they're actually trying to keep the nest, they go through the whole process of making sure that there's no nests out there. It would just approved by PETA, we, the process we use, they'll even go out into the pond with remote control boats to. Have the geese still find a better place to live than Meat Park. So it's helped itself wonderfully, it's been great in Meat Park, so.
They're very destructive group. And I've driven by Saks so many times where you can't even see the field or something.
Especially at a time like this, where there's a little bit of snow cover, just as soon as it melts in spots, they come in. So it's it's really the the track field at the high school is the worst. And Saks.
Yes, Saks is tough.
That's just tough, it's it's a big, it's a big fee block for them. There's other nice places that they think eat. Like.
So I how do you, how do you bring this contractor in, I mean, just do certain scheduled times they can make?
Schedule times, like right now, they come into Meat Park twice a day.
Okay.
Seven days a week.
And just run some dogs.
And sometimes they don't have to do anything if there's no geese there. But we're not at a point where we can say that, okay, we can go down to twice a week, but we eat them there every day because once they make a home.
Do they get smart, do they know you're coming at a certain time?
I think that some of them recognize. No, we don't, it's not a set time.
Yeah, okay.
It's different times a day, so. Grass treatments this year, which is our fertilizer and a little bit of. Weed control, grow control, uh, we're looking for a ten percent increase there, which to me seems high, but last year we're looking at. Uh, forty percent for seed and seventeen percent for fertilizer, so. Still tremendous, tremendous high increases. So, any other question about parks? Okay, here's a nice quick, easy one, civic activities. So civic activities, the outside services, refuse, portable toilets. The main thing that's happened in there is developed a true cross and we also have the need to use handicapped, handicapped accessible. Or bodies, or jobs, um, so that's a, just a different price, so that truly will. Our ass will truly keep us in line with what we need to get. And then the other items, we've been able to use, uh, special projects money. So we don't want to take the the line items like programs, band concerts and Memorial Day out of the budget, even though there's no money there, because at some point in time. We'll be dwindling those accounts down and we'll have to do it, but not for the foreseeable future. Okay, recreation. When when you look at recreation, you know, there's a lot of lines that came out because it went to the self sustaining fund, which we're going to, we'll get to. So salaries full time, myself, Zach, Steve Dayton, B and Debbie are all right there. Um, part time. You'll see that that's gone down a little bit. That's mainly because we we feel with our new rec software that we've created almost a year. We don't need somebody in the office the same way as days of of way back where you had to wait in line for your pool pass. And everything, so we don't need this summer help in the staff, and for some reason, something comes up where we need somebody that would come out of self sustaining anyways, not out of the rec department. So. Yeah, most of the stuff is fairly simple, the one thing of note right here is. We're looking at dog park maintenance and our revenues weren't what we thought they should be. And we found a little problem with our gates and we're working on switching out the locks, so we can actually have better control. Of who's in there and who's not in there, which will then mean our income will go back up to where it should be.
Yeah, people jump into turnstiles and dogs.
Not quite, we've got a problem with updating codes, so we need to switch out the locks.
Where's that jump, I'm sorry.
There's, there's a line item in there for dog park maintenance. And, you know, it it, it's at sixteen two fifty, our revenues are way down on that line item. And when we started looking at it, we were figuring out why. Waving House, again, some of the expenses came out of there, uh, were moved out of there into self sustaining. We did make a little bit of switch, uh, Butch, who has always worked up at Wavine House, is now doing more repairs. Around town, so all town buildings, it's sad for us not to have him there.
But I love him.
Yeah, he he's still working with us, you know, it it's what's best for the town, not best for us, but, uh, you know, buffing floors. He always had a very bored look on his face and so being able to actually repair stuff, it it's been great for him, so. Um, so there's been a little bit of switch shift in employees there. Paddle tennis, again, that's gone into self sustaining, what's left in there is our summer maintenance. What's left in there is the repairs of the courts and then just properties repair and maintenance. So through every year, we try to paint one court and we have to tighten the wind screens. Tighten the screens, tighten the screens on the paddle courts themselves.
It said recently that the the membership, the sales of membership has dropped a as a percentage, what what kind of number was that, because that was always just a.
Percentage, what we, you know, very simple way of looking at it, we have about three hundred people that are now have pickleball permits. And about three hundred less people. For paddle tennis, part of what we think's happening, and this is not for sure, but people are still playing pickleball. Like we have to lock the pickleballs yesterday, pickleball courts yesterday because of the snow, uh, because we don't want somebody out there ruining the. The surf, the paint surface by shoveling them. So, but with the two warm Decembers that we've had, people have been playing pickleball every day. So, you know, I think that's part of it. Is it a long term trend when we get the capital? Um, we delayed, we were going to request for another, an additional paddle ball court and a whole, um. Picknick type area there and we just push throughout a year because it might be too big of a plan if we don't have the usage.
Is it, is that, I noticed that like you reduced the fees, uh, or the proposed fees for the paddle tennis and increased the. Fees for pickleball.
What we, what we basically tried to do is have all racket sports at the same fees. So we had to reduce some and increase some others to make them the same. And those are membership fees, we want to make them all uniform, less computer, the people kind of said, here's your family pass.
I see, okay, yeah.
The program prices will be different, but the membership fees are all uniform across the board.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's probably our biggest change in these.
Makes sense. Unless there's more maintenance.
Park buildings. Again, there's this little bit of switch with the Butch and Rich in there. As far as big changes there, yeah, there's nothing drastic. You know, one of the big costs is the electricity, a hundred fifty one thousand dollars, but that also includes the lights on the water power fields. And the orchard field.
Oh, so it's a little overstated.
Well, it's not overstated as far as amount, but it is.
And in terms of where it's applied, yeah.
Where it's applied, you know, in the parks, parks operational budget, the lights for Duning and Meat Park are in there. Lapham Community Center. So. What we're, we're mainly looking at, um, you know. We're not hiring any full time people for the grant or anything like that, it's going to be extended hours, we have included a little bit of money. You know, we're not hiring any full-time people for the grant or anything like that. It's going to be extended hours. We have included a little bit of money. For overtime, Kathy Collins, assistant, if, if she does work overtime, it's a little bit more, we raised that two hundred fifty college, so. Yeah, we, the rest of our, our expenses are, are small, adjusting adjustments. Um, program meeting expense, we're finding that we're gonna have, we're probably gonna be using a little bit more paid instructors.
So if, if using more paid instructors, is the revenues gonna offset that?
Or through a grant, yes. Well, the paid instructors through this budget wouldn't be part of the grant, but the paid instructors. For, Lapham is not in the self-sustaining.
Right.
We, we, we definitely. Lose money per se at Lapham, not really losing money, we think we should for, support our, uh.
We're providing services.
Providing the services there. So in order for us to truly be self-sustaining, if we're to do that with Lapham. Our grades and our free programs would all have to disappear. Our rates will go up and our free programs will probably almost all disappear. Quanis Park. Very small. The main reason our salaries part-time went up and their wages gone, again, so for our life guards there. Uh, last year we made some, some substantial adjustments, you know, we. Raised the amount for supplies building grounds, so we could purchase the right amount of sand. And also supplies chemicals, you know, which is mainly pouring injecting to the, into the water that fills the pond. You know, that went up a lot last year, so we think we're gonna be good.
How about Quanis utilization? Can you talk about that?
Yeah.
I mean, I know, and, and what, what's the, what, what's the current deal we have with the Y? They pay, is it fifteen, ten, fifteen thousand dollars a year for, for the use of, uh, majority of?
Yeah, they, they just, just, um, they have a three-year, uh, lease with them at fifteen thousand a year.
Yeah, when does that run?
They, they, this coming year will be the first year.
Oh, okay, and it used to be five. Okay, so it's three. And they had like complete, and then in COVID, we were talked about changing it, but then with COVID, it was like, need more space, so. Everyone was stressing under COVID, so the idea is, you know, the Y, you know, provides a very affordable camp.
And yes, we have Metcalfoness now and at the pool, so we've got both facilities there, 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 uh, uh, you know, providing a service.
Yes, yeah.
Partnered with them in two places.
Well, yeah, at, at Quanis, they run in. Completely. At the pool, we work with them on what the program.
Your, it's your camp, your camp or your lessons and then they provide instructions.
Their camp.
Okay.
So they're, they're strictly, we're.
Okay.
Tenant landlord type thing there. They, they do their own camp.
Okay, but they bring campers to the, oh, the pool?
No.
No, our camp brings our campers to the pool.
Correct, yeah.
And they run lessons that are not part of camp?
They're not part of their camp, not part of our camp. The lessons are completely separate. We need a new instructor for lessons, so instead of recreating the wheel, YMCA's in town. And it was a home run. It was, they kept it at cost, it was great for the residents, so the prices were down and everyone, we had really good feedback from that.
Right, and, and the Y, uh, using the pool in the morning for, uh, long-form swim team, right?
Correct.
And do they pass?
Yes, they do.
Would do the pass for that? Yes, but.
I shouldn't know off the top of my head.
Cause it's, it's from, is it five thirty to seven thirty? It's, it's an early, early swim.
It's five thirty and I think they're gone by seven thirty. Just during the week.
And like, I think it makes a lot of sense to partner with the Y, with the skill set. We should just make sure that we're doing it in a way that. You know, it's good for all the residents, but we're not. I don't wanna say leaving money on the table, but it's an appropriate level of reimbursement.
Yeah, because of the cost associated with running one.
Right, right. The, for us, for us, it's expensive to, to run, um, came up at the last week's parking rec meeting. What would be really nice now for us would be a nice splash pad or a splash park. Uh, you know, but. That's not in our budget request, not for design or anything else at this point in time, but. Yeah, just the idea of doing.
It's been perpetually underutilized, Quanis, you know. It's, I mean, it's, it's nice and it. Yeah, well, we haven't put any money into it, so. And we haven't developed programs for it, so.
From a camp standpoint, it's a premier place, I mean, you got playground, you got courts, you got, I wish we could utilize it.
Yep. I think that's the, we can encourage park and recs to get back. They had done it a couple of years ago, were focusing on it, um, and then it kind of COVID happened and stuff, but I think. It's again, it's a resource that's underutilized.
Yep. So now let's go to the revenues, the fun part of everything. Cool point, so, um. You, you won't see a lot of revenues in this third slide mainly because of a self-sustaining fund. Um, so there's dog park fees. Um, I think once we straighten out the lock situation, which we're working with a lock company now, we will, that, that. Even bees coming in. In this present budget year, we're in, um, rental of the Y for Quanis, uh, Meat Park, Snap Farm, those are our main fees. With that, you, you've probably seen, you, I know Josh gave you the theme memos, um, very simply, we're not looking for any big changes. Our main changes were to make, um, racket sports all the same fees, get rid of the confusion. And then we made no changes, this, the second part of that in the wave any weddings. We did increase that last year. Those fees that you have were approved by the Park and Rec Commission. So, but whenever. You guys set the peak, so.
Yeah, there's an in-town and out-of-town.
Yes, yeah. So the self-sustaining fund. We have, we have, for the recreation part of it, we have nine sections from before and after-school fund, camp.
We have a page on this. Yeah, it's in here. It's in your budget binder, page twenty-nine. Thank you.
So before and after schools camp, um, soccer and, and fitness, flag football, softball, tennis. Paddle tennis, pickleball and special events, so. Each indivi- in, individual section has its own profits, uh, we are working on the assumption. That we're gonna, we're gonna at least break even on most, all of our events. Some of them, um, there is, there is some extra money in there. Which will then be determined at a later date with us, how that happens. That money is then shifted back to the town general fund to cover costs there. So. So before and after-school programs, almost always a sell-out. Our biggest limiting factor there is the amount of space. At the schools. Um, summer camps, like I said, we're at sixty, went to a hundred last year and a hundred and twenty this year. Our limiting factor there is we need a place for the kids to go and play with weather. So waving house can only hold so many, uh, so that, that could be our limiting factor. Soccer and other stuff, you know, it, it's USA, it's also yoga and fit, fitness programs. Um, flag football, it's three hundred and twenty-five kids in flag football. It's one of the most popular things. If you were watching the playoff games, you can see the NFL is advertising it, and that's who we partner with, with flag football, they have the whole program. Softball, anywhere from eighty to about a hundred and thirty adults. Um, tennis at Meat Park, this is, you know, the programs, the classes are always, well. Participants, yeah, um, paddle tennis is down like we said, uh. So, and then pickleball, special events, briefly went through them, but the father-daughter dance, we had to add an extra seating. And that's the one thing that's a self-sustaining fund that's really helped us, and very easy. To be able to say, listen, we're, we're bringing in this much money, it's costing us this amount of money. We were able to have another hundred and thirty people. Come to, you know, sign up, because it sold out in a matter of minutes, so. You know, similar breakfast with Santa, we had three seedings and we would have tried to add a fourth one. Um, we couldn't find a Santa. Our Santa we had.
That should never be a limiting.
Our, our Santa we had had another commitment, you know, it's a very busy time of the year.
I know some Santas in town.
Santa Association, cause with the.
I think we need to.
Talk to me next year.
Well, yeah, we, our Santa will, is willing to do it again. It was just at the last minute trying to add another seating.
Yeah, can you just go back really quickly to the soccer, cause I see a significant fall off in rec soccer, um. And is that just, the, the kids are going more towards the, uh, you know, uh, what do they call them? The official premier and official.
So with, when soccer, when I was brought in, I looked at soccer as a whole. Um, we definitely revamped our younger program, which is a three to five-year-old, which is great. We found it outside the organization that comes in and does that. But the recreation soccer as well, this is the only, um, program that the recreation department runs where there's also an outside organization as well. So we don't do like baseball, we don't do softball, this is soccer. So I do think it's more just that, uh. People are kind of choosing where they want to go depending on the age and so forth. Uh, we are looking at ways to kind of revamp that program. Right now, we are K through, um, K with our soccer. Uh, we do find that most of our numbers are in K through four, so maybe we decide to go that. But we're just giving these residents different options, but it's definitely because there, there's another option in town that you can go to. So they're utilizing wherever they see fit, based on schedule pricing and so forth.
Okay. I just would encourage you, as long as you can keep it, I remember hearing for those older kids who didn't go to the real. You know, it was a great socializing thing for kids who weren't as, you know, interested in the heavy competition that. Would be, you know, part in, so I think there's a, a nice.
Demand.
Yeah, I think, you know, for kids who aren't, you know, or who have other interests that want to just continue to participate.
And we're trying to give them, so the problem that we're seeing is like that fifth through eighth grade, so we have like thirty kids total. So you have three teams, you know, so we're trying to figure out a different program, whether it's like a clinic style, they can hang out, open play. So look at some different ideas, do some research surrounding towns to see what they do for that age group and kind of go from there.
That's great.
A revamp for the spring and then the fall soccer is much more popular.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
So, any, any other questions for self, self-sustaining for the rec programs, please?
The, and these are expense, uh, these are expenses associated with that.
Expenses, but you also should see.
Revenue at the top.
The projected profit.
Yeah.
So, oh, overall, overall, right now, we're projecting about a seventy-five thousand dollar profit coming in. Coming into the, our whole programs.
Okay, I don't see that, but that, I guess I could have added a lot.
It's a, it's a nice way to do it, John, because you're putting everything under one umbrella and kind of showing it, you know. As a whole, rather than, the, the old way of doing it was each one of these things had their own little. Accounting, it was, this is a lot easier to, to look at.
It's also easier for us, you know, it, it's, it's great being able to say, okay, we have, we have a problem, few phone calls and we're able to add another seating. It's.
Well, as you're being flexible, reactive and responsive to the community, so that's great.
The perfect example, you said it was that five-dollar dance. In the past, it might not have been as easy, but we heard a couple of phone calls, got some email there with a kind of comedy, what they wanted, and it worked out, worked out well.
Great. You know, it'd be so great for a lot of these, uh, programs to, to have numbers associated with how many people use it or do it. I mean, cause I think one of the interesting things about Park and Rex. Um, and well, my sister Sally was involved for a long time and I was, I would always say, you gotta present it to us, like, this is. The total expenses of the town. We offset this with X amount of revenue, so for this much of a contribution, X number of people are getting these services. It kind of presents you in terms, I mean, a lot of those stuff we have to do, you gotta pay salaries and all that stuff. This is kind of like the icing on the cake for the town and a lot of people benefit from it. So I think in the way, if you can kind of put it in context of. We have this many people doing this, many paddle tennis, and they've gone up by this much, et cetera, and, you know, our all-in costs. For running all these Parker Rex things is X, we offset it by this much, so net to the town. This is the investment we're making to provide so much. I think it's, it's a good way for people to understand how much Park and Rex adds to the fabric of the town.
Yeah, you know, a lot of people say kids, people come for the, for the school system. You know, being a park and rec, we like to say they come for the parks and our programs.
It's additive, it hits, it hits everybody. Every age group uses it, and so if you can kind of put it in context, you know, like. This many people use, yeah.
Turn to page one fourteen-ish. One fourteen, uh, there are some performance metrics for the recreation department, the various programs. Which.
Yeah. Yep. Great.
At least it's a start.
Yeah.
Being held for each program with each numbers. And it was nice to, with the new system, we've been afforded for us, like I tell you, like, right now, like. Whatever, uh, special events stat over two thousand two hundred and eighty people between all of them for the past year. So there is a report that we can definitely get you that breaks down everything all the way down to who does our hit class, our exercise classes, all the way through after-school programs or fifteen hundred and so forth. So there are numbers that we can get you for sure.
Yeah, but I, I think it's a way of profiling.
For sure.
And, and you know, this, this is your time to kind of let the people, you're gonna talk to us, you're gonna talk to Board of Financial, to town council. To put it in context of what Park and Rec does.
Okay, just want to answer all your questions, but this is the self, the next one is the self-sustaining wedding fund. So.
Great. They're helping us get chairs.
You, it's your next regular, regular meeting. I hope you're gonna be, be willing to approve them.
They're good-looking. Maybe you should invite the other selectmen to come and look at the new chairs before they have to.
Any, anytime you'd like, yeah, we're finally looking to replace the chairs that we have. Uh, with some, with the same chair that.
That everyone rents.
That everybody rents and we see them stacked on the back patio whenever there's an event.
And then will you cha, will you rent them to people or would it be just part of the fee?
We're just gonna have a part of the fee.
Just saying.
If anything.
Just saying.
Well, we're looking at it as, if we're making a better wedding venue.
You can raise our rates.
Raise it, we know we could potentially raise our rates, you know, as we.
That was the recommendation.
Yeah. So.
They're a little dated, your chair soon.
A little bit. With, with this, you know, this, this isn't, if, we, we say weddings, but it's any, any special event. So, or any other event, community usage in general, uh, is, is. Monday through Thursday, so Friday, Saturday, Sunday are weddings for our outside groups, that type of stuff. It's mainly weddings, but there's other, other events that could go on.
What kind of other, you know, I know you, you probably, um, allow the different service organizations to use the facility for free. Is that true? Or no?
True, yes, to a point. There, there's part of it is that.
Custodial fees associated with it?
Custodial fees are included in our, in our regular budget, um, but with the, uh. Local nonprofit groups are supposed to be making a donation.
Okay.
So that's why I say, so there is some fees associated depending on.
So besides weddings, who else do you rent Wavine House to?
Steve Carl, your anniversary party, right?
Private, private.
Private parties, private parties, is that pretty much what it is? But it's pretty much, you know, wedding-like, so.
Yes.
Private events like that, not like corporate things or other outside organizations that are.
Corporate things that, you know, and it's mainly local organizations. And we do not rent out in general on Wednesday night. So, that's, that's the community usage. Steve Banco Pool, now we're kind of in our, our. Other program, so, you know, it's over twenty years old, still very successful. Last year, we were able to do a lot of, um, capital repairs, you know, from. Changing the sand in the filters and recoating them, the changing pumps, et cetera. So this year, we're, we're not going to be doing any major capital programs, uh. But we're down the road, we're looking at, it's time to start replacing the concrete decking around the pool. We figured that will be a, become a two-year project, just to have it all done. But we think we're good, we feel strongly we can get through another year, which really becomes two years with the budget process. With the deck that we have.
Wow, two years to do the deck around the pool?
We'll, we'll separate it into two separate years project-wise.
Okay.
Um. But it will be two years before we do it. We're not putting in this year's budget, but next year we come back saying that there's gonna be, we need money for it. That money won't be available till July, so we'll be working on it and hopefully get it done in the fall.
Okay.
So it's showing signs of where you're cracking and stuff.
We got some cracking and, and it's the northeast and it's twenty-plus years of, of concrete sitting there. So we do make some small patches, you know, to keep the deck safe. But it's gonna get to the point where we're gonna say, okay, we need to, this isn't just replacing one panel, concrete here and there, we should do this. But it's going to get to the point where we're going to say, okay, we need to, this isn't just replacing one panel, concrete here and there. We should do this whole section.
When's the last time the, the bottom of the pool got resurfaced? I, cause I was swimming and A, I want to congratulate you, it's so much cleaner than it used to be. So I thank you. It's so much cleaner than it used to be. But you're swimming along, you're looking and you realize, oh, that's not dirt, that's just the surfaces we cracked. And I know they did it somewhat recently, but that, that's gotta be a big expense at some point. I don't mean, I don't mean cracked, it's like the, the whatever the surface is chipped.
We have, we have the pool company make minor repairs every single year. Or when they're either shutting down or opening up in the spring. I don't know when exactly the whole thing was done. But last year their evaluation of our pool surfaces. Yes, it's, it's, we're not at a place where we need to redo it. Simple part of it. We did do a lot of work around, uh, the gut, the gutter drains, we're having sweeping problems, which same thing, twenty-year-old pool, it's, it's no wonder.
So, so the balance, you're, you're basically flat operations next year, the balance, uh, in the, uh, uh, the pool fund balance that, oh, one point three, one point four million, that's your capital account.
Sitting there for when there's major repairs.
Right. And so when, when do you do, uh, and maybe you do it every year, but just an evaluation, if that's enough money there? Because the way you would get more is you would adjust the fees.
Adjust the fees.
So, uh, when till, is there, is, is there kind of a, a five-year?
Our, our, our main thing we're looking at in the, in the five years is really the pool decking itself.
Okay.
We don't think we have problems with our, our piping, which would be major, major work.
Right.
We've updated our pumps, um, we're, we're in a good place. Um, if, if for some reason we want to change, you know, bathrooms or something like that, uh, minor things we're looking at this, this year, and they're really minor, it may be a robotic mower. Because those Y swim classes every morning early just limits when we get the grass cut. This will be able to go out and cut in the middle of the night. Simple little thing.
Yeah.
Um, we're looking at some digital lockers that, you know, you don't need to know a combination or bring your own padlock or anything like that. It's just a matter of walk up to it, get a button, your face is scanned, boom, it opens up and you come back and you put your face in front of it and you can take your stuff off.
Right.
So, but as far as major work, we don't see it.
That's good. When was the last time you raised Waveney Pool fees? I see, I see you have the same fees, uh, next year as you had this year. Minimum wage going up and everything else.
We're, we're a little bit backwards on the pool right now. We didn't want to raise, raise the fees at this point in time. We do very well, um, with the out-of-town assets.
Oh, so the, the, this.
That includes, it, it does include.
But you didn't raise the non-resident.
We didn't, we didn't raise any rates this year. It was, it was done the last time before me.
So how many years is, I don't know how. Wow, we haven't raised rates in a long time then.
Right.
I think you have room there, yeah.
Once they sold the, uh, once the bond was paid off.
Yeah. But it sounds like you have some capital improvements that you need to make and.
We're gonna need to, but it's not going to be, you know, our one point three million.
Yeah, well, just wait till you have to redo the pool.
Right, well, that's true.
I like, just wait till you have to do, redo the base of the pool. Um, you don't want, I, I definitely wouldn't want to be, uh, eating into that at all, cause it's a pool resurface will cost you a fortune for a size.
We could look at it, we could look at it two ways. We, we did have the, uh, the rates approved by the park and rec commission, but we could always go back.
Yeah.
Um, the.
Was there any discussion of when was the last, I mean, what was the discussion around the rates? None?
I, I agree with you. I, I think there ought to be a discussion, cause I think it's very low hanging fruit.
Yeah.
I mean, your supplies, your chlorine is more expensive, every, all the, the chemical, everything that you use is significantly more expensive and minimum wage is up, so your labor is up. And then you've already just told us, you have a deck you have to replace.
I, I, I would maybe push back on rates.
We'll go back, I'll, I'll discuss it with the, um, the committee.
Yep.
For the pool.
I, I agree, I agree. I mean, look, so if a resident pass is, uh, four fifty-five, you know, for a family.
Yeah.
That's a good, that's a good value.
Yeah.
And so, you know, if you push that up twenty-five bucks.
Yeah.
I don't think you'll have any pushback on it, um, like at all. And, you know, the senior pass is eighty bucks. It hit that up to a hundred. It's, it's pretty cheap. You, you go anywhere and you pay to swim, you're paying twenty-five bucks a shot, so.
Okay, so Parks Capital Equipment, um. So. Uh, starting out, I've been told that you have a list of money that's been left over for other parks projects. I think the first thing on our list is a vehicle um, for eighty-five thousand dollars. It, there, there's money in the, uh, leftover vehicle purchases, there's some money left over from a rec vehicle. We would be able to reduce our request as long as we were assured that we could, um, use that leftover money. So you can know that there was, I think it's sixteen thousand dollars left over from a rec truck.
Hey, John, I'm sorry, what page?
I'm like, it's in the back here. Hold on just a second.
We don't have your same.
All right, and it's not, it's not, no, it's not here, but it's in the back here, hold on, let me just find it. Taxes, and I suppose. Parks.
It's for public work.
That's how it works. Parks Equipment, here we go, one thirty-seven.
Thank you.
Okay, so like, one of you mentioned that, you know, we're looking to replace a ten-year-old truck. And by the time it, it gets to be ten years old, it's time to replace them. So, but with that said, if, if we can be assured that we can use the money that was left over from number of years ago for recreation truck, it shows in Josh's list that again, we could reduce that by fifteen thousand. So.
Is that our fifteen percent contingency leftover money or is it just stuff we approved and didn't buy?
Cheaper vehicle came in and tax-supported capital, so, um, that money would normally get closed out, meaning if Josh says it's the fund bound or reassigned to other capital, other tax-supported, uh, projects, instead of taking more tax, uh, from the general one.
This is, is this like a big pickup truck or like a bigger?
This will be what we consider a, a lowboy truck, so dual wheels in the back, four-wheel drive. It's one of our workhorses.
And you change out the beds sometimes? Are those the ones you change out the beds?
We can change out the beds, we've been purchasing it with a new bed, uh, snow plow. It's one of the workhorses for the parks department. So we'd be trading in the one that is ten years old.
Are there electric vehicle options for these yet or not? Well, yeah, you would know.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Not this size.
Okay.
Well, we ask these trucks to do, they're, they're not ready for electric yet.
Yeah, I mean, they don't, they don't do a lot of mileage.
No, but it's the, the amount of power that's needed to do what these guys do.
You don't want to stop in the middle of a job and be like, oh.
Or cold weather where it does a lot of charge. I'm just, I just feel, when we general, we should ask this, you know, we should ask this, cause the emissions are important and all that jazz.
It's just the type of truck that will have a sander in the back and a plow on the front. It's, it's, for us, it's a he, it's a heavy-duty truck for us in the Parks Department. It's nothing compared to what the highway uses with their bigger trucks.
Okay.
So to me, you know, our request is for the purchase of the new truck. But depending on how that wants to be funded, I think that should be up to others, whether we say that we don't need the money in the rec department, that, you know, that was from that purchase, earlier purchase, that's fine, either way. Um, utility vehicle, you know, there is money that, if you were looking at the same list, there's money left in there. We're in the process of spending that, uh, we're going to be coming, the board of selectmen to approve, purchase of, of golf carts in the present budget. There, this is not for golf cart, this is for a heavy-duty workman-type vehicle. Workman is actually Toro's version of it, but John Deere makes one and Jacobson makes one. Um, this will put a sander in the back to do sidewalks, trail maintenance, we can, we can carry over a ton of material and still get around to the trails, that type of thing.
Is this adding one, is this replacing one?
Replacing one, it's replacing one that's almost twelve years old.
Okay.
That, that one's a lot of work and you see it all over.
Yes, we, 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 we presently have two Toro workmans and we try to get ten years out of them. We're over ten years and now it's at that point where it's, it's rusty and not as reliable. And when we need to, you know, trail maintenance is one thing. If it breaks down, okay, well, we're not fixed doing that today. But when it's sanding sidewalks and that type of stuff, we need to have something that's reliable.
So the one you have, okay, so this would take a while to get this, right? You wouldn't have this for?
No.
Yeah.
It will probably be quite a while. And that's why I say we, we've had Toro. Toro has really gone way downhill on how quick they are providing vehicles and motors.
But still, good quality, right?
Good quality, but Jacobson has good quality and John Deere has good quality.
So you invented that.
Well, yes, it did. And most likely for all three of them will be on, uh, purchasing type agreement when it's time. But a lot of it depends on how, you know, if they say it's going to be two years. Toro made, has made the statement recently that we'll give you a price of what it costs today. When you get us a purchase order, we'll order it. When it comes in, a year to a year and a half from now, we'll tell you the final price. You can either take it or not.
Okay.
We can't really do business out.
Yeah.
So. So next item, seventy-two inch mower, uh, this, this is a, um, mower, out-front rotary mower that will be used for, um, parks, schools. Some limited athletic fields, you know, with like a baseball infield, we could, we could use it now at the park for the three baseball fields there, that type. Ride-on mower, so the ride-on mowers are the zero turns, you'll see us and landscapers using them. Um, they're kind of the workhorse for the parks and school grounds, that type of stuff. They're sixty-inch mowers. Um, we try to get eight years out of them. By the time we're done with eight years, they're not even worth the trade-in. So we usually dispose of them.
The seventy-two inch mower, that's a replacement as well? These are all replacements? There's no additions, right?
The, the seventy-two inch mower is an addition. We, we do not have the same mower now, but it's going to be replacing with different.
It's swapping some.
Yes.
So these are, these are all replacing older vehicles.
Yep.
That we have.
Right.
And, and they're useful like cycle with this eight or twelve or whatever years, right?
Right.
Okay.
Until you get to the next one. It's articulating loader, um, that, that is, uh, we have what's known as a vent trap. We're using it for brush cutting, um, snow removal, um, blowing, that type of thing. That would be an additional purchase. That is, it's a, it's a little small articulating low, uh, mower. We have one now, it works out great. So there's a lot of times where we need a second one, you know, to cut the edges of meat pond. And virtually get right down close to the edge, cutting back wave knee trails, that type of stuff. Say nothing about blowing leaves, uh, we even have a weed cutter that we can use to cut the weeds on the baseball infield.
So, so what do you do now that you don't have?
We have one, but there's a lot of times that we really need to, to get a lot of this work done.
And you would do it in house versus outside contractors or, I mean, it's.
We don't know of any contractors that has a piece of equipment like this, you know, in general. So it's, you know, we might, it might be used to cut the edges of meat pond back. And then the next day it could be cutting waveney trails. So we, we've opened up the stone walls along Waveney on Lapham Road. It would be taken up there. We don't use that, it's, it's men, manpower with weed whackers.
Oh, so that's, that's, so you, you have the guys go in, cause I was like, well, can't you just like the next day take it, you know? I mean, does it, I, I understand you have a cycle of everything you have to take care of. And so, you know, if you didn't have this extra equipment, the cycle requires weed whackers by individuals?
It requires a lot more handwork, yes. So if we could have, have two of them, we, we'd be able to stay up on top of things, similar to.
So where's the offset in the hours?
There's not really.
I think, I think what you're talking about is better maintaining what we have, is that what you're ta, talking about?
I think that this year we weren't able to do, uh, meat pond edges as often as we'd like. We'd like to hit it three, four times a year.
Okay.
We're down twice.
Okay.
So.
So it looks scrappy.
So it looks scrappy, yes. And it's just one of the many places like that.
Yeah.
Um, so, so John, in, in, in something like this, I know in the past, um, we've talked about, um, having, you know, uh, maybe it's in targets by years, uh, you know, outside contractors come in for like the fall and spring where you just can't, you wouldn't want to keep the staff on and stuff like this. So just having something like this is, uh, does that, uh, offset some of that or is it more that we just keep the place looking better?
Keep the place looking better.
The weeds away so they don't mess up this, the hardscape and jazz like that.
We still use outside contractors like for the, um, bed maintenance.
Right.
You know, town hall, by god, et cetera. So, yes.
Right.
But this wouldn't be, we don't have a contract. Meat pond wasn't done as much since we're using that as an example this year. We would have liked to have done it more.
In this last, what, ten years, this, this machine?
We can get more, we can easily get fifteen years out.
All right.
Amy, I can remember your sister saying over and over again, why aren't we taking care of this best? Why is this?
I, I'm not disagreeing.
Yeah, no, it, it's, it's that ongoing maintenance, it's, it's annoying, but when you see what it looks like when it's done, really nice.
Which is, I, I think people need to know the amount of acreage we have. And what happened when we brought Irwin Park on, this is forever ago. We said that we were going to give additional staff.
Yeah.
Then we had financial pressure and the staff got cutting and we'd never, it, it takes a lot to maintain this stuff, right? And so it's kind of, uh.
And need the tools to give these guys to make sure that that's not right.
Yeah. I'm, I'm just telling, building the case, you know, that, that square footage, you know, we had, you know, I mean, so that people understand we're not just going, yeah, this is kind of fun tour to have, you know?
Yeah, I don't like when people call them John's toys. Uh, um, the blower, that's for a stand-up industrial blower, um, that we use for anything from the turf fields. We've, uh, blown the edges of them, coarse blowing leaves, uh, there's, there's times we don't routinely blow our trails off. We like to leave them with leaves on there, but we've got cross-country bees, that type of stuff.
This is going to be current, are there electric options that aren't as god-awful noisy?
Not on this size, there isn't. There is some electric options and we've been demoing them for hand units. We're, we're hoping something's coming out. We're being told that something's going to come out as far as a backpack blower that's electric. Uh, part of our, our main issue is battery charging. You know, so are, are we there today? No. Where we can, where we can say we're going to go electric as much as we can. I think, are, are we getting closer? Yes. But right now you're losing the amount of CFMs, the bit of air you're blowing. Um, the, the charge time isn't, isn't that much. The noise factor doesn't go down that much with an electric blower. Because a lot of the noise is coming from the wind.
I was gonna say, we have one for, um, something on our property and I, I, I barely get the, the area I need done and it, it's not that effective.
Right. They're getting, they're getting better.
Better, it's just, it's frustrating as a property owner, it's frustrating.
How many years ago did we think that you could never have an electric car unless it was a hybrid?
Yeah.
You know, so I, I think we're making.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a world, we're making bet, we're making progress, but we're not there with everything. We've demoed electric weed whackers, uh, and a lot, a lot of that has to do with, we're not saving any weight or.
Some of the noise complaints that we have center around weekend use and these guys are, you guys are working on Sundays.
Now, we, there's times that we have to work on Sundays, but not usually, we're not usually coming in Sunday to blow leaves.
It's in town, uh, people that live in town.
Oh, it, it's everywhere.
Yeah.
Yeah, and they're, and it depends where you sit. If you're like low, the noise is just.
Yeah.
But again, to the extent, just going along, uh, Robin Bates-Mason, to the extent we, when we can leave stuff, let's leave it cause it's better for everybody, but I know you got safety issues and stuff.
You know, so, you know, blowing off the trails, you know.
Yeah, I was gonna say, those cross-country meets as a parent of a former cross-country runner, it's like, you gotta get that stuff off.
There are times, but when we can, let's, you know.
You know, as far as leaves are concerned, one of the main things we do now is we mulch as much as we can. So we mulch them right in place, you know, weather is our big limiting factor. You know, but we have a, a ten-foot mower that we put.
It's great.
Guards on there and it's tremendous.
Definitely, that's great.
But, um, trailers, that's to replace the, uh, proposed baseball trailer.
I'm sorry, is it, was the blower a new one or existing, a replacement? New, okay, just, just adding.
Um, the, the paint machine, this is to trace the fields. Last year we were fortunate to purchase, uh, robotic machine for laying out the fields, which works great. But we don't use that every week to repaint. During the season, we repaint all our natural grass fields every single week. And sometimes depending on the weather, we might have to squeak in an extra, extra time. So this is a ride-on machine that's replacing one that's old. We like to keep two in stock, you know, so we will trade in or sell the oldest one and then we, we have a. We like to keep two in stock, you know, so we will trade in or sell the oldest one, and then we, we have a backup. We can't, we can't not paint on a Thursday or Friday with athletic competition started on the weekend, so. Field mower, that would be used to um be hooked up to one of our existing tractors to mow Waveney. Um Irwin, we mow Irwin high grass every other year. Um that type of thing. So that's just an attachment. That's to replace an old.
Replace, yeah.
Um field equipment accessories. This is a little bit of a change. This is for anything from pole posts to soccer nets to equipment to take those on and off. We have never, as a town, we don't regularly buy soccer goals, etc. The sports groups do. We do, it's not perfect that way, because sometimes we do, but so this is to take over the purchase of, of all those goals, so the crossbowls, etc., as we need to replace them. So I mean, field accessory type stuff.
So where, what budget did those purchases, where were they housed previously?
None of our budgets. They went through the sports group, say, new Canadian football, the soccer group, um you know, the, the lacrosse association, when they needed new goals, they paid for them, when they need new nets for their goals.
So why are we taking that on?
If you came into the budget a few years ago.
Okay.
Uh it's just been still coming forward, so here we are.
So you're taking on more?
It's taking, uh, it's the town taking on more.
So, so you're saying like all the goals on Saks, the soccer goals and switch them over to the lax goals, all the goals, uh the waving, the little kid goals?
Waveney is the exception, because those are our programs.
Okay.
Those are, those are purchased by the town anyways.
All right.
But the ones at Saks, yes, when, when a goal breaks or something, it's either.
Is it a school expense?
No, it's, but the revenue, so this is where I want to understand the offset, because so the, the various organizations taking the revenue, but we're taking on the expense of the goals? Um that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, you, you're, you're pretty much, you're.
Okay, so I don't like that arrangement?
Okay.
But, but some of it is for the school, well, right, so, no, 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 I'm just saying, like, if your kids are high, not middle school, high school, right, high school lacrosse. You know, lacrosse, soccer, like the, 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 the goals, the goals of Connor, okay? Connor is a largely a varsity soccer or, or. Yeah.
What? Play an artificial now.
Yeah, but so who, I mean, who, from the athletic program, we don't have any equipment for.
High school athletics.
Yeah.
Purchases.
That's Jay's budget.
Jay, Jay purchases some.
Right.
But the, you know, that soccer goals at Saks, Jay's not purchasing them. Those would be the associations.
And these are all these, we've all been seduced into travel soccer players, it's very big numbers, so they, we give them the goals for, I mean, we have figured it out.
We can, we can, there's, there's no reason we can't continue the way we are.
Mm hmm.
And you can.
Yeah, I like that. I like that line.
That's just, it's a big creep.
Yeah.
I mean, we're, we're taking care of the fields, we're taking care of providing all, all facilities.
We get the use and make profit off it, right, right.
Right. The high schools are different and, you know, and the PE programs for the schools, that's a very different uh conversation, but for for-profit entities, that's, that's not, shouldn't be the towns.
That's easy.
All right.
So that's your capital. The parks, infrastructure one, Tiger Wolf. Be doing it here, so. Other than that. Okay.
Guys, I think, you know, we all want to compliment you on the, the amazing facilities that we have as a town. I mean, it's, there, the parks we have, every time you walk through one of them, phenomenal. It doesn't matter what season it is. I mean, every single park and the way you guys maintain is absolutely.
We try, but a lot of that's because we have the support of the town too. Yeah, so it's not, you know, if we don't have the tools to do, to do the work, it would be almost impossible, but we're very proud of what, what we have, and that's why it makes it a great place to work.
You know, as Amy said earlier, it's amazing how many parks we have, and it's a huge responsibility, and you, you talk to the guys, I've talked to them before, where you start, you mow the lawn here, and then you're blank, and during, you know, with grass growing, you've seemed like you're back, and you know how it is at home. It's just a constant maintenance, especially during that growing season, so you guys do a great job.
Well, we think, we, we look at this year, you know, everything stayed green all summer long. It's not the best way to get other projects done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, Zach.
We have Mike Benaventoff. The retired Mike.
Mike. Mike.
Mike. Did I say to come up? You're, you're up.
What, you want to come down?
Well, yeah, because.
Where do you want it? Mike will come back with us the next day.
Oh, he should come back with you the next day. I'm sorry. I thought he wanted to do it.
Because then we don't have to rush it.
Okay, great.
Okay, okay.
That's even better. We're trying to be sensitive to your names and your being sensitive.
Oh, okay, they just decided. But having said that, um I think what we're going to do, just in time, so that we can get time for um DPW and Mike and all to come back on the twenty-fifth, which you already have a regularly scheduled meeting, I think what we're going to do is take the regular meeting portion and move that to the thirtieth, and then start at eight AM on the twenty-fifth. Start with them. That'll give us enough time, and then we'll go into Board of Ed and.
As long as you don't mind, I'll be on Zoom. I've already seen your pretty faces live, so.
It's fine.
I'm going to travel that day.
That's fine.
Works for us. That's fine.
Anyway, that's my proposal at this point in time, so we could start on the twenty-fifth. We'll confirm that, but you were already scheduled to be here anyway for the regular meeting, so we can just move the regular meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
All right, well, thank you for coming.
That's a wrap then.
It was good you were here, though, for that conversation, I said.
I got to, yeah.
You got that conversation.
So we just need a motion to adjourn.
Oh, okay, did I get a motion to adjourn? So let's see, Amy, second, it's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.